I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And may that be true. So we'll call the meeting to order. This is a February regular council meeting, council meeting of the city of Now Then. Tuesday, February 9th, just after seven. And so we have our policy here. We do have an agenda printed. There are agendas in the back of the room. We'll follow the agenda. If there's amendments to that, the council will decide that, but the agenda as printed or amended will be followed so that all necessary needed actions by the council will be addressed. The agenda can be amended by proper motion for discussion items. We do have business from the floor as welcome and allotted for in our agenda, but we do ask if there's something that comes up on the floor, it's not something that's already on our agenda. If you want to bring something to the council's attention that's not on the agenda, that's what the open floor items is for. If comments are made from the floor, first you need to be recognized by the mayor. Second, state your name and your address for our records, and then you'll have up to three minutes to state your comment. We do have agendas on the back table. We're not doing sign-ins right now on the back table because of COVID, and please, we will ask you to silence your cell phones. So Lori, would you please take role?
Mayor Pilon?
Present.
Councilmember Blake?
Here.
Councilmember Alders?
Present.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Rainville?
Present.
And also present Commander Heath from Yanoke County Sheriff's Office and Lori Jaeger from RTY Consulting.
For those that may be following online, Councilmember Rainville is calling in from remote, excuse me, remote location as per the COVID procedures that are allowed by statute. And so with that remote, we'll need to make sure that we record roll accordingly, so. I will look for a approval or amended agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I have three things on consent agenda. One is this clerical keynote, A, the full city council special meeting minutes. This is regular meeting minutes. And then I would ask that item C and item E be called for discussion.
All right. So.
C and E.
C?
C as in Charles and E as in Edward.
Okay, C and E. And where are we going to put those in? You want to put them in right after the consent agenda?
But I would say that we've got to, excuse me, change all the numbering. So I would say put them in under number 11. So they would be 12 and 13, and then the existing 12 and 13 would be 14 and 15.
All right. C and E. All right. Any other amendments to tonight's agenda? Seeing and hearing none, I will call for a motion to approve the agenda as amended. And just to be clear, that is to include the amended agenda we got today with the Upper Arm River Water Management item as number 11. And then good of the council, we have P and Z and council planning session. So with those, accept a motion to approve.
I motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Motion from Councilmember Blake.
I'll second it.
And a second from Councilmember Alders. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, all in favor. So motion carries unanimously. Floor items. Since we don't have a sign up list, anybody have a floor item that's not on the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, we will move on to the sheriff's report. Commander, welcome back. Are your troops staying warm?
As best as possible, yes. Well, things in that regard, things have changed so much with the technology of what's available for clothing and undergarments to wear in cold weather. It's a lot better than it used to be. So it's still tough. Today was a day of, I'm okay sitting behind the desk in an office on a day like today.
You notice the sheriff doesn't make you turn your car off.
That's a.
I heard the music in the parking lot. What am I hearing?
Well, my apologies. I must have forgotten to turn the radio off.
No, it was nice walking in there. I felt like I was being serenaded in there.
Well, there you go. I just wanted to give a quick update. You and I had spoken a little bit before I left for Washington. Thank you for the kind words and encouragement as we sent a detail of deputies and myself to go out and work at the inauguration. It was nice to have that conversation with you. Glad to report everything was very uneventful for us and was nice to see Washington DC again, but nice and uneventful. So again, thank you for your kind words prior to that. Just an update on the calls for service for this month. We had a busier month in Now Then. We had 136 calls for service. Six of those were to bar none and didn't see any increase in concerning calls there, but didn't see a decrease in some of the ones we'd like to see. I haven't gotten any communication back.
So when you say that, can you, is it appropriate to clarify?
Sure. Some of the same issues with juvenile runaways, things like that that are tying up resources. One of the juvenile runaway calls, three of the residents were able to just walk out and get in a waiting vehicle that had shown up at the property to pick them up and then left, which is a little bit disturbing for people that are there in need of services and stuff like that, that they're able to somehow communicate with people in the outside world and then just simply walk out and get into a vehicle that shows up on the property and then leave with them. So that's some of that same concerning things we were talking about before in some of our meetings, you know, how these type of things are happening. No more serious assaults like we had seen, but still some things that are, I'd like to see them improve even more. So.
And you have continuing talks with the sheriff on this or?
Well, we have. In the last, you know, I was, one of my questions here, I have gotten no follow-up communication from Volunteers of America after some very small communication about this. We provided them with calls for service and information like that, that they were going to review and get back to us. I haven't gotten any follow-up. I don't believe anyone else in our office has, and I was going to ask if the city has.
We discussed it briefly the other day at our work session, and Liz said she had not received anything from anybody other than their proceeding with an application, which our caution was because of the meeting with the sheriff, because of the meeting we had with Health and Human Services, we were expecting follow-up from somebody before we move ahead on anything. So we're still expecting that. To hear that they somehow are able to communicate either by private cell or some type of internal phone with people outside of the community to come and pick up, that would concern me greatly if there was something more disturbing that was planned. You know, I mean, again, we were fortunate after the adventures, the riot in November, but if somebody were to be able to communicate outside the community, that would be very unsettling. And so to not hear how that happens and to not have any feedback at this point is concerning. So we need to have a follow-up meeting, and if they're not going to initiate it, then Linda, you know, on behalf of the council, I think we need to.
I would agree. I was going to ask if that would be, I think we're at the point where, you know, we've spoken and now we've got silence again. I'd like to not let this die on the vine per se and continue to push to see some formal steps. And if they're doing something internally, I wish they would maybe share that with the rest of us who, you know, between the city and the sheriff's office and St. Francis, who have generated the concerns. If they're taking steps to improve things, it would be nice to know so we can understand what's going on because right now it's just quiet.
Well, and I would like to see it so that DHS and VOA, Health and Human Services and Volunteers of America are in the same call or the same meeting at the same time because it was disconcerting to have different information come from Human Services than what we were told by Volunteers of America on the very specific question that came up from law enforcement. And there was differing answers, and that was unsettling to say, as the chief said, I've been doing this for 16 years and I've never heard that. I've always heard the opposite. And so we need to get that resolved and determined what the formal action plan is going forward, so.
I would agree. I'll converse with the sheriff and I'd like to, I don't know if we want to do a joint, just or if you'd like me, I can respond to the people I was in communication with and say in speaking with the city of Now Then. We're both in the same spot where we're looking to hear what the next steps are in this process.
Yeah, you know, I think that we probably need all parties together because what we're hearing is pieces, you know, what we heard in your meeting, what we heard in this meeting, and then we're seeing nothing. And so if they're doing something, it would be nice to know that they are, something more than just looking to move forward on a CUP. And so I do believe that it needs to be Health and Human Services, Volunteers of America, law enforcement, and city. And I would imagine that would also be reasonable to have our attorney involved so that.
I think that's a very good piece of the puzzle.
Council in agreement with that?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
I'd heard that maybe someone from the Volunteers of America would like to meet with our council. Is that something we're interested in? Not unless we have the whole group, we're not interested?
No, because what they said at the time is they want to move the application forward. And they haven't answered any of the other questions. So coming into the council, I think is too early because they haven't told us what they're going to do.
Okay.
And until we have agreement with their licensing agency, Health and Human Services, and the law enforcement that is getting better, because again, hearing that they can contact outside people and show up with what's been going on in our country this last year, that's an unnerving thing. And I want to know that they have controls in place, planned and effective before we even talk about it. Because what they want to talk to here is their application, you know, we're ready to go with the application. I haven't heard anything that says they have implemented any changes or any evidence that they have put controls in place.
Okay.
And maybe they've got staff to call fewer times, but still six times is significant, so.
And even quite honestly, I don't believe that they've actually addressed the concerns that were brought to them by the city or the sheriff's office. They've acknowledged that, yes, we see, you know, but they haven't addressed like, okay, you brought up these issues. Here's what we've done, or we don't see this as being an issue. It's just been conversation.
Well, and we did get a letter saying they really look forward to working with us, and I think the letter just missed the point that we were making completely. So, and that's the only correspondence we've had. So we're just as in the dark as you are.
Well, I can just kind of stand by and wait to see what we hear next.
I think, you know, you were the point person that they wanted to work with in the sheriff's department. I would talk with the sheriff. And then let's see about getting another meeting together, you know, deal with the chief in St. Francis, and then we can work with Lori to figure out how we can get some, but I would like, I think it's important to have VOA and HHS together.
Well, then what I'll do is I will reach out to the people that I've been working with. I don't, the sheriff I know will agree with what my plan is. We need to reach out to them and get something set up. And instead of doing things via email or telephone, let's have a meeting where the city, the sheriff's office, St. Francis would like to be a part of it, Human Services, they can give us all an update at one time about what's going on, and I think that might be the best way.
And Linda, don't you think of this, but I think at this point, because their concern has been the application, we've asked Liz to give us a compilation of what she's accumulated as a background information. We have her very large report. I would say at this point, probably not include the planner because I don't want them thinking this is about the planning because it seems like that's where we went last time, is how do we get to the plan? This is about show us that what you're doing there should even be in existence, that you're doing anything effective there and have controls appropriate to the type of clientele that you're working with. So I would say at this point, rather than doubling up on contractors that we aren't ready to move forward on a plan, I would say let's keep it with the legal and the law and see if we got anything because they've had plenty of time to put together a plan. And while I appreciate the hard work that Liz put in, she collected a lot of data. I would have thought that that's if you were applying for something, that they would have come up with this. Here's our justification for existence. Here's our justification to move forward. And to put that all on Liz, I think, was inappropriate of them to assume that she was going to do all their work for them. So, if that makes sense. So if you want to get that initiated and work with Lori, then Lori can work with us.
Absolutely.
Council agrees?
Yes.
All right, so you nodded heads, and I hear yes, so. All right. I'm sorry for dragging that out. Anything else you have for us on the, you had 136 calls for service, not a lot on the site. So when we see that, you know, we've got, you know, maybe two dozen items here of 136. The other types of calls? Do you have a synopsis of the other 100?
Sure. I mean, it's anything from, we had in, over the month, we had six thefts, two assaults, a damage to property. And then the calls for service list that comes out that Lori gets has everything listed by different category as to where those calls originated from. So I don't have every single, I can't get you to 136 without just going verbatim down the list, but it's very common law enforcement activity that occurs in pretty much any place I've ever worked before. It just, sometimes the months are higher and sometimes they're lower. And then as cities tend to grow or they, different people move into and out of cities, sometimes the calls for service increase and sometimes they decrease depending.
All right. Anything else we need to be aware of?
I was just going to ask for the appropriate venue. In the future, I brought this up to the council's attention in the past, but in the future, there will be a need to talk about whether or not we need to expand the contract based on calls for service. And I just want to know what the appropriate venue for doing that is because I'd like to have time to prepare to show the council information as to why we would ask for that. So I don't want to do it in a very rushed manner. I want there to be a genuine conversation and we be able to explain things. So I just want to know what the appropriate venue for that would be, whether it's a workshop or this.
Again, council, I would say because it's a bit more involved, I would say a work session. Our budgeting cycle starts in April with capital improvement. So I would say, and we're going to get busy with road stuff coming up, so probably I would speculate April work session, which would be the Thursday before our regular council meeting. Does that make sense to the council? That gives you time to prepare, and we have things that were already coming up on a March schedule.
Well, I'll put that on my calendar and I'll just plan on attending. Yeah, perfect.
Because that way we have time to evaluate it before our budget cycle.
And I want you to be able to ask questions. That's why I wanted to make sure I found the right place for this because I want there to be a meaningful conversation.
We'll have questions.
And if I don't have an answer for you right now, I will find you one.
Well, and I think that's the thing. So before we get that deep into the budget cycle, it gives you a chance to go back and research anything we've questioned, so.
Absolutely. And that's all I have.
You can show us based on what our calls for service and the makeup of those calls are and how it's working with other municipalities that the sheriff's department is working with.
Yep, absolutely. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Councilmembers, anything for the sheriff, commander? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Have a good evening and everybody stay warm.
Glad it was uneventful.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I wonder why I'm right on my schedule. So now we go with the quarterly financial reports. Lori, late Jaeger, can you take that?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Included in your packet is the quarterly financial reports for the year ending 2020. So it's up to December 2020. Of course, these are unaudited at this time. We are still working with the auditor and getting the final financial statements prepared. So I did prepare a slight, a little memo for you with some highlights, you know, regarding the general fund budget. You know, we're over budget in the general fund this year, but it is, it has everything to do with the CARES Act grant. So we were able to get some money from the CARES Act and we were able to successfully spend that money for items that were necessary in the city of Now Then. So congratulations on that. The other items that we mentioned in here is that the professional services are down about $67,000. It's primarily, still comparing it to when you had AEM working for you, and now they're not working for you. The other item in there is that you've hired a different building inspector, and so those costs are down. There's less engineering and assessing charges in the general fund this year. And of course, our fire is up about $30,000 over last year just because, and we knew that that was going to happen this year. So other than that, there's not a lot.
Let me say, part of that, the fire, is the duty crews.
Yes.
Because there was a switch in the coverage through Ramsey.
Okay.
And because of that, our labor costs are up because we have people that are assigned to duty crews. So the hours are significantly up because of the duty crews. That's part of that.
Okay, sure.
Because I think the other cost related to fire will probably be showing up in this coming budget cycle.
Yes, yes. And then the road and bridge funds, we are using some reserves in there right now to pay for our 2020 improvement costs. And we were looking at issuing debt in 2021 to cover those costs plus any of the 2021 improvement costs that we're going to be doing. And that should be coming up here pretty soon. Our recycling fund, I think in October, my October report.
Can I ask Lori, you say should be coming up pretty soon, because that's one of the things, where does that fit? Because I know the interest rates right now are still pretty good, but I'm hearing speculation on.
Very good, yes. You know, the engineer needs to get the costs to us.
For 2021?
Yep, and then we can move forward with contacting sellers and starting that whole process. So as soon as the engineer says that he's got some good cost estimates, then we can move forward.
Okay.
And then the recycling fund, back in October, when I brought you the third quarter report, I overestimated on what we were going to have for revenues in there. I included about $25,000 that we actually got in 2020, but it was supposed to be accrued back to 2019. And so with that adjustment, our recycling fund revenues are only $49,000 rather than $65,000 or whatever I was estimating at that time. And so they're down from what I originally thought. We still have income, you know, we still have $1,900 of income, but it's not what I was projecting back in October. So, and then total cash is overall down about $180,000, and that's as a result of using the improvement fund to pay for the street renewal projects, so.
Well, and interest rates went from five figures to.
Yeah, it's below a half a percent. It's, you know, you can't, even with CDs, you can't get a decent rate on anything. So we're sticking very short term because we don't know how long this will last. And so we're just making sure that you have the funds available that you need to pay your bills, and so that's the plan right now.
Can I ask? With, something came up in years past, and we haven't talked about it much because we've been going with the 4M fund, but now that 4M is not giving us the best interest rates.
Sure.
And Jason, I don't know if they've covered 4M yet in your training, but that's through the league. So we've reached out to other places to invest our CDs.
Sure.
And I was looking through those in this last report, and one of the things that we were cautioned on years back is to make sure those banks are solvent, that the amount that we have in each one is actually insured.
Yes.
It looks like you've distributed them pretty evenly, so we're under the FDIC.
Yep.
But in the past, we went with some non-FDIC investments.
Okay.
And we went in excess of the insured amount.
Okay.
And then we were told some of those banks were on the watch list.
Oh, okay.
So do we, when you invest here, is somebody watching that? I noticed there's a number of banks of China.
Yep.
In there.
Yeah.
Are we watching in the political environment that we have right now and the economic environment for solvency? And like I said, the amount of money looks like we're covered under FDIC.
Yes, we are.
But we want to make sure we are FDIC insured to the right amount, and we have solvent agencies. And like I said, it's probably nothing, but when you look down at the Bank of China, it's, I just want to make sure we know where we're investing our money.
Yes, yeah. And it's actually, it's in the United States. It's not actually in China.
Yeah, it's in New York.
Yeah.
But it's the Bank of China.
Right. But yeah, we are definitely under the FDIC. It's 250,000. So, and we never duplicate as far as CDs. So all of our CDs are spread out amongst a variety of banks, and they're all FDIC.
And we do verify FDIC insurance at those.
Yep, they're all FDIC insured, yes, up to 250. So we never go over that, so.
Yeah, we went significantly over previously.
Yeah.
So I was looking at it. It looked like they were all under, just as long as they're insured.
Yep, and they are.
And then the other thing that we were cautioned before, just make sure somebody's checking the watch list.
Yeah.
So when you do pick the banks, they're FDIC insured, but they've also got to be solvent to be able to.
Yes, yes. And that, you know, the 4M fund, they handle, they do a lot of that security checking and things like that. They don't sell products or CDs that would get us into trouble.
So these investments that you're distributing, are they distributing through the 4M?
Yes, they're all through 4M.
Okay, so they're doing that?
Yes, yes.
I thought we were doing that because we weren't going to 4M anymore.
No, I'm not a broker, so I'm not calling banks or anything like that, and neither is Lori. So we have, we just tell the 4M fund, this is when we'd like a maturity to happen. They go out and they find the CDs for us, and we tell them the amount. So it's all through the 4M fund.
I was mistaken because I thought once we were running it through the 4M fund itself, I thought we were out finding somebody to pick banks for us.
No, they actually are our broker, so. Okay, then I don't know, you know, in how much depth you want me to go into all of these spreadsheets or these reports that I have. The first one is by department, and you can see there are, you know, they, I'm comparing budget to actual for the year ending. You can see the general government, the building fund is way up, and that's where most of the COVID or the CARES Act grant funding, or not funding but spending, is allocated to. And the fire, we're up a little bit over there, and also our legal costs are up slightly, so. And these numbers will change because I, we've been working on 1231 numbers here this week, and we've discovered some additional expenditures that need to be recorded and some revenues that need to be moved. And so they're going to change, not a lot, but you know. And so they're going to change, not a lot, but you know, expenses may go up about $50,000 compared to what they are right now. And I think revenues might drop about $15,000. But overall, you're still going to be well, you'll have excess fund balances this year compared to last year.
Which is a good thing.
Yes, it is a good thing. So and then you can look at the comparison. The next sheet shows you in the general fund compared to 2019 and 2018 numbers. And generally speaking, the reason why you have negative, where you're using some of your fund balance is primarily because you're transferring money from the general fund to other funds where you can utilize it on equipment or buildings or road improvements or things like that. And so it's a very good use of money that you have in the general fund. You want to stay, your fund balance, you want to keep it between 25 and 50%. And so when you exceed that 50% limit, it's good to transfer money to a capital fund where you can utilize it for future projects. And then I just.
I just want to reiterate then, so for those taking the LMC training, did you just follow that? Because you just would have gone through that, the fund balances and the reserves and that.
Yes.
That, did it register when you went through it?
I got it all down. Just perfect now. I'll probably do Laurie's job next year, so don't worry about that.
Which Laurie?
Yeah, which Laurie?
Right, right.
Well, I'm getting so smart. I don't know.
That's all I just want to, you know, it's timely because we're going through this and we just would have gone through it in the training session last week. So it's, trying to make sure that the terminology registers and we understand our role in it.
Yeah. And then I had a graph of the receipts there. You can see obviously the property taxes is your largest income for your general fund. And then the other things are shown there. The intergovernmental revenue is higher this year because of the CARES grant. And then when we look at disbursements, obviously, general government building, that's where we put most of the COVID expenditures. So that's way up there. Public works normally is high, so that's pretty typical. And so that's just a graph of your disbursements and how they look from year to year. I also compared it by salaries and supplies and professional services. That's the third one. Just to give you some perspective on, you know, where your money is being spent and things like that. And so that's a perspective, a different look on how you're spending your money. Obviously, your transfers out were down this year. That was budgeted. We determined that we were going to not transfer as much money out in 2020 and so that's what's happening there. And then, of course, we have a category graph. And any questions about that? And then fund balance reserves, we'll just jump right over there. Your general fund is up slightly, like I say, from last year. Road and bridges down, of course, because of the improvements. The debt services is up slightly because we had the bond issue in 2019. And then we had leftover money that we transferred into the debt service fund to help pay that debt. I think it was $85,000. Actually, that was left in the construction fund that we transferred to the debt service fund. So that will impact how much you have to levy in the future. You won't have to levy as much because you've had money left over. And then your capital and equipment funds are up because you transferred money into those funds from the general fund. And then briefly, if you want to look at the recycling center fund, I know you wanted to talk about this. You're going to talk about it later tonight. You can see in 2020, your recycling proceeds were down, but that's because your operations were down. You didn't spend as much time there. The COVID had a lot to do with that. So generally speaking, you normally are getting $20,000 in revenues from recycling. And you're getting the county reimbursement at the maximum amount and that's because you're actually doing some improvements there. And so next year, or this year actually, you've budgeted about $20,000 of other improvements in addition to the 30-some thousand that you get from the county. So you'll get another $49,000 this year in 2021. Now you can see here, your services, your personal services were also down, but that again was because you had volunteers working. A lot of the council members were working there and so your staff costs were down. But if your staff costs go up and your revenues go up, you're still going to be making, you know, close to a small profit or, you know, hopefully you don't lose too much money. Right now, your cash is at 20, almost $28,000. So you're sitting fairly good for a fund that doesn't have a lot of activity. And so I know you're going to have discussions about, you know, do we keep it open? Do we close it? In regards to the finances, I would say, you know, you would be safe going for a few more years even because you don't have large losses in any given year. And so seeing that your largest loss in the last three years was only $7,000, you have at least two to three years of reserves that you can utilize if you do have some losses. So that's just my two cents.
With that cash balance, we could also, if we're looking at improvements and things that would make sure that our revenue stream stayed at least equal with our expenditures.
Sure.
We could use that for improvements.
Sure.
That we will be discussing as well.
Yeah. In the county, I know they do give you $20,000 for extra grant improvements. In addition to what they normally allocate for you, they give you $20,000.
So that's the 20,000 plus the 30 gets us to approximately 50.
Yep, exactly. Okay, and then briefly investments, we're at 2.6 million right now. And we have it invested across the board in a lot of CDs and stuff like that that mature. Every month we have a maturity, so. And the balance sheet is there too, so. Are there any questions for me? I know that's a lot of info in a very short period of time. But Mike will probably be going over this again very soon when we wrap up our financial statements, which we'll probably wrap it up here at the end of February. So I'm anticipating him in March or April, probably April.
And so the decrease on the investments then, 156,000?
That's because the cash is down. So because of the improvements that you've been, the road improvements, you had.
Yeah, because I confirmed those were tied together. All right. Well, I'm assuming the audit will reflect this and overall very good?
Yes, yes, you're in a very good financial position.
So I would presume then our AA+ will still be in play for our investment system.
Yes, yes.
For our bonding.
Yep, definitely.
And for those of you that have been here for a while, but then Jason, we are a rarity in a small city like this. We have a bond rating of AA+. And I'm not sure, I've asked how we get to a AAA, but it said you'd really be, you'd really have to work at it.
Yeah, I don't even, I know the county doesn't have one.
He said it's pretty rare in the cities they work with to have a AA+ in a city our size.
Yes, it is.
Laurie and Laurie, keep up the good work. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
It's very valuable to us as we go bonding and.
That's great. It's great, yes.
And I know when I'm in governmental meetings with other mayors, it's usually touted as, this guy from Now Then here's got a AA+ and 5,000 people.
Yes.
I appreciate it.
Yes.
Any questions for Laurie? Nobody here? Mary?
No, I'm fine.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Appreciate that concise report.
Yep. Thank you.
All right. We will move on to planning and zoning.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I would more tip the, that according to the facts and findings presented by the city planner, that the council approved the minor subdivision slash lot, the line is 5259 White and Boulevard, TID 24 dash 33 dash 25 dash 43 dash 0002.
We have a motion from Councilmember Rainville to move forward as presented from planning and zoning, recommendations from planning and zoning. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Second from Councilmember Blake. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
Okay, this is the situation where we're talking about the Frontage Road that they.
Yes, this is the property that Jill Green is looking to buy from Kent Raisler.
And then his son wants the piece.
Yep, the 10 acre, they would split off the 10 acre parcel.
And we were wondering if we had to, and the planning and zoning recommended that we continue to keep that.
To not require that portion to be easement for Frontage Road.
They, that's, I thought they did the opposite. Oh, okay.
In the report here, they're saying they did not require that. Where the understanding is, is the property to the east now is intended to be farmed for a long time.
Okay.
But it is now also residential. Where originally, when that Frontage Road concept planned, it will still be in place. It's still part of our comprehensive plan. But if there is a development on there, that's when that would come into play. And to set aside an easement on something that's uncertain whether anything would ever be developed, first of all. And secondly, if that's where the road would be, the planning and zoning said, we don't want to encumber that at this point. We still have the concept plan as part of our comprehensive plan, so we can still rely on that if there is a development on that corner in the future.
So if someone develops it, then they can choose, then that easement becomes.
They would then come before the city and we would say, here's the concept plan. How does it work into your development?
And we can, and they can have that if they agree with our concept plan?
Yes. That's when we would address it, when a developer would come in.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council? And in hearing none, we have a motion and a second. I will call. All those in favor of the motion.
Aye.
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 And those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Gentlemen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I could be incorrect, but I believe that ordinance 2020 dash 04 during our conversation, the work sessions, we are sending that back to staff, so that's, we don't need to deal with.
That is correct. I would move to table that until we get the report back from staff. I think Councilmember Greenberg is working with staff on that, so.
Mr. Mayor?
I was talking to Laurie before the meeting and our discussion from last week did not get to her, so this is kind of news to her. So I would expect that Liz would be bringing her up to speed on this because that was a project that went back through Liz to Laurie and Joel was going to be working on some of the graphics. So if we need to formally get it off here, I'll move to table it until we have the report back from staff.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
I sent a drawing.
First, we got to get a second.
What?
Need a second to my motion first.
Oh.
I second it.
All right. We got a motion second. Okay, so you sent a draft?
I sent a draft to Liz.
Okay. All right. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I just, if Councilmember Greenberg is working on the artistic side of it, again, I had mentioned that I would like to see if it's our flyer, it should have our vehicle on it. I don't know if Joel's working on that piece of it or if he's just working on the drawing where the, where you can't, can't put snow. But I just want to reaffirm that we use our vehicle and picture of our vehicle and anything that goes out to the relevant.
So Laurie, the brochure that we had showed a Genere's truck or something. And so a couple of things, we wanted to see the wing because that was really the issue and the wing was buried in the photo. And it came up at our meeting that if we're going to use artwork, it should be artwork that, if it's not our truck, it should be photoshopped to look like our truck. And then again, the logic behind it was to, that wing is the problem. And if people just see the front blade, they don't realize that getting it off the road is the big deal. So my understanding is Councilmember Greenberg is just working on the graphics on showing the shoulder and the right away. The trucks was a separate issue. But you should, if Liz doesn't bring that up to you, you might want to ask her about that. All right. So all those in favor of tabling this double here back from staff?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously.
And Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Item C, I believe that was voted on at the January meeting, so is this just for informational purposes?
At my knowledge, because yes, that was voted on previously. That was the ordinance change, repealing ordinance 2020-07? Correct. So that's been voted on previously, so I'm assuming this is for information only, just to see the cleaned up document. All right. And move on to planning and zoning commission.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I'm not there on the agenda, it's just a member, but I would like to, I don't know if they're there for a conversation or not.
Chairman Ames is here.
Okay. Are we taking conversation or is there anything new that can be provided or?
I think that anything new we received today from staff was, Dale, were you copied on what went out today in the packet? So we had some additional information. Remember last Thursday at our work session, we said there's some missing information. It was, we needed to discuss. It was the interview questions, the qualifications, a couple, there were, I think, one or two other things. And so we asked if that'd be sent out to council? So it's part of the packet for today?
Yeah, council, it was sent out to council and updated on the website, but not sent out to commission members.
Could we send that to at least Chair Ames so that he's in the loop here on that? And then if he, you know, if it's anything other than what we discussed, then we can talk about sending it out further. But I want to make sure that Chair Ames is aware of everything that we've gotten so that he's part of that discussion. So you'll receive that in the morning?
Dale, it's in the book on the back desk if you want to see. If you want to take a look at that?
So the information that you had forwarded to Laurie that we thought was going to be part of the meeting last week, Chairman Ames is getting from the back of the room, so he will see anything additional that was added.
All right, thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, so we're at the draft application. I have a motion. I would move that the council directs staff to host the planning and zoning commissioner opening according to the draft commissioner appointment procedures, which was mailed out today, and that the interview will be held until after the council discusses and agrees upon the draft description, posting procedure, qualifications, and interview questions at the February 18 council planning session.
All right. Did the council understand that motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. All right. We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Rainville made the motion. Councilmember Alders seconded.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
My goal has always been to have a professional process and fully committee opening. And I believe in order to do that, we have.
And I believe in order to do that, we as a council need to have the ability to receive all of the information that should have been previously provided to us, and it wasn't for today. And I know that two of our members work, and so I don't know if they've had the opportunity to look at in detail or provide any input into it. So I think tonight if we look at the draft application and we agree on the content, I can make changes, and then we'll forward with the field of the opening, but if we uphold the interviews again, so we have a conversation.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
Just in my own mind, clarifying this, we're going, we're going to look at this tonight, the application. I know you said this, Mary, but I'm just kind of repeating it for my own understanding. We're going to try to see, go through this application, see what things we like and what we maybe want to change tonight. But when we meet on the 18th, is it the 18th? Is that the date? Then we'll, we go over the questions. So they send the application in, but we probably won't interview people then until, would it be after the 18th if we make a decision? Or would that be after the next council meeting?
It would be on March council meeting.
Then we'd okay the questions, and then we'd interview the applicants, is this right?
That would be my understanding.
Is that, is that right, Mary?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
So, Councilmember Blake, yeah, that would be the goal. Again, people need to be able to look at this, have input, things and changes have to be made appropriate. But yeah, look at the draft of the application and add that here at the third of the eight. I think that will help the process a lot. And then, and we're, yeah, if you want to be a professional, and if you can be professional, you need to make sure that they've done a good job. That everyone's done their due diligence.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders.
Who's going to interview? Why wouldn't we give that delegate that authority to the Planning and Zoning? They've always done it in the past.
We've just approved. Councilmember Rainville.
So, Mr. Mayor, as part of my initial RCA, and the information that wasn't included was what we had provided to us originally. In there is the draft Planning and Zoning Commissioner project policy. And that I have the council interviewing the members, but that is something we would discuss on the 18th and make changes if that's what we choose to do.
So, Mr. Mayor, that's not decided. Who's going to interview yet?
Correct.
We're just, the only thing we're really deciding tonight is the application, right?
That's the motion, yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
So I want to ask council, have the opportunity to look at the application and what is their input in regards to the application. I will say there was one question on Thursday about the immediate family, on commissions and stuff, and that was on the previous application.
There was, there was discussion last week on the, the list that was sent in from council members. And again, just to clarify, I think we kind of confused some of the audience last week. At our January meeting, we were, we, the council was asked to provide input as to the Planning and Zoning application process, the vetting process, and to supply that to staff, and they would supply it to Mary, who was accumulating the information, which would then come back to the council, and we would review that information, decide what was important to us. So, you know, Mary was the one accumulating the information, but this is not Mary's information. It's all the documents you see here are accumulation of things we all had input on, had opportunity to have input on, and that it would come back to us. So when you look at the interview questions, when you look at the qualifications, those types of things, some of those, all the council may agree on, some of them the council may not agree on, that will be what we want to discuss. What's reasonable going forward? And that's why it's important to have all the information to evaluate, what do we want to do as a council? Do these questions make sense? And is this the process we want to pursue? And that's what I thought we were going to do last Thursday, we didn't just have all that information available to us to do it. One of the things we discussed on Thursday was on that last sheet of the draft of the application form, we didn't get to the paragraphs at the bottom about the planners, staff, and commission members have an important role in assisting city councils implementing comprehensive plan, the foundation upon which a city now then guides its future growth, redevelopment, improvement efforts. Planner, city staff, and planning commission members work to ensure that new developments, redevelopment, remodeling projects meet zoning and subdivision requirements while being consistent with the comprehensive plan vision. And then we wanted to pull the key elements out of the comprehensive plan to make sure that people, when they're applying, knew that, yes, they're an advisory committee, that you're helping us implement the comprehensive plan and pull the ordinances, and here's the half dozen key items from our comprehensive plan. Because as Councilmember Blake said, we're not going to require everybody to memorize the comprehensive plan before moving forward here. But obviously, we do want to take the key elements and say, "These are things that we're looking forward to." If you're, if this is part of your interest, that, you should know that in applying. I don't know where that fits in the draft application that you have. And we have a, Councilmember Rainville.
So, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I tried to keep the application to three pages without going too small or long. But one of the things I thought about in association with the draft, with the application is that we also have this cheat sheet on what is the planning commission. And that's where that type of information can be addressed. Now, on the application, it does have a submit list, it's kind of giving you some bullet points of what it is you're going to be committing to if you apply, appoint to the council or to the commission. But also having a cheat sheet that would say, you know, like frequently asked questions. What does the Planning and Zoning Commission member do? Give a description, what are they responsible for? Just some of the highlights, so that they understand what it is that they're applying for. Again, I think that has to be presented in a professional manner, and that we are providing information for our residents that are interested in these positions, and I think that goes well for us. But that is also something in the cheat sheet that we need to work on. And that, there were, excuse me, there were two pieces, one was supplemental information, and one was prior to applying, and those two sheets could go into the one of the, you know, cheat sheet frequently asked questions of what does a T and B mission member, and what are they expected to do? Which then, yes, excuse me, we decided we could staple that to the application, it'd be a four-page application. So it just gives everything in one spot.
Well, one of the things on the front page of this application is, "I've read in the standard Planning and Zoning Commission policy on commission structure, meeting order, and general procedures, including code of conduct and commit to adhering to them." That would also have to be supplied, wouldn't it? And if you're asking him to read it, you have to give it to him.
Right, and so on my draft of the policy for, like an equipment policy, on there, I say that we, and when we're in focus on the web, that at that, hoping to provide links to all of the items. So the city code, the comprehensive plan, the planning and zoning commission policy, and commission structure, which includes that code of conduct, and then contact information, which is staff, mayor, color. So that's just covered under the policy, so they would know where to get that information. We can't, I mean, it does, it would be quite burdensome to print that for everyone.
What about those, those that don't have...
Provide them links to where it's at.
What about those that we found don't have a reliable internet right now in town?
Well, then if staff access prints, then they print, but they're not going to print all of them, you know. We have to be careful, because we don't want to burden staff with printing. I'd have to go back and look at the number of pages of the city code during the zoning, I can look at that.
Well, the policy and the code, the code of conduct is 13.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
It's getting to be a lot of, okay, we don't have a huge interest in this position. I mean, I heard from Mary that they still don't have a total amount on the planning and zoning at this present time. You only have, you're functioning with six and have been most of the time. So I think some of this is becoming burdensome. If I were going to apply for this position of going, you're already asking a lot from them that, I mean, here's the, and I think it's good, expectations, and that makes it really clear what you're expecting from them. But I think it can be a bit burdensome that you actually think that, and some of these questions, I think are difficult, because not everyone is going to be able to have a professional experience which qualifies them for the commission, but yet they still might be a good candidate to serve on that commission.
Well, and that's, and that's what you find in the interview process.
But, but...
Then why we have the questions for the applications?
Because in some, in some areas, it's going to, it's valuable information.
Well, we're going to ask them in the interview.
You know, I would, I would say that, not that it weighed in on this, but when I applied for the league board, it was a lot more significant than this.
Well, it's a lot bigger deal.
It's, it's, this is important to our, to our city. But, but I'm saying that when they interviewed, some people had significantly different professional backgrounds. And that's one of the things they were looking for, was a mix.
Yes, that's what we are too.
That if you look at it and say, "Well, you don't have all of this, but what you present here is the mix we're looking for."
But I think the problem is, is this could scare somebody away from even applying, when you read all this stuff. It's like, describe your educational background which qualifies you. Does a 12, K through 12 education qualify you or not? Describe your professional experience. What is professional? Does that mean you have to work in the industry? Does that mean you have, can a person who operates a D9, is that professional experience? I mean, I think we're making this thing way too difficult for the number of candidates that we're going to get on here.
Well, if you're saying we're looking for a, Mr. Mayor, excuse me...
Councilmember Blake.
If you're saying we're looking for a variety of people, this isn't, we need to make sure they understand that, because it sounds like we're just looking for certain people. Professionals who have had a background in some type of civic organizations of some kind. That's the way I would read this, and that might detour a lot of people who would like to get involved in the city, but they, they look at this and think, "Well, really, I haven't done anything, you know, professional. I don't work outside my home, but I would sure like to be involved in this." Or maybe I have a business in my backyard, and I'm doing, and I've lived here for 50 years, and might be a good, good fit. But they might look at this and say, "Well, I don't, I haven't done much of this." So then they wouldn't even consider applying. Somehow, we've got to make it that we're looking for a variety, and that everything on here doesn't have to be answered to be, I don't...
And everyone's welcome.
So, so let me ask this, Councilmember Rainville? How many of these questions are already on the existing application form?
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, good.
There, on the existing application, they ask for community service, acting, captain presence, professional activities, civic and professional organization membership, educational background.
Slow down.
Are you currently serving in any other city commissioner committee? Also, that's both of those questions about immediate family on this kind of thing. And then, please state briefly why you are interested in serving, or which you are submitting this application, and why you feel you are qualified.
So let's, let's try this a different way. So the first question on page one, is that currently on there, Mary?
The first question on page one, are you currently serving or having served that?
Yes.
Question taken.
Yeah, is that currently on the existing application?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good.
Is number two on the current application?
Yes, it is.
Good.
Is number three currently on the application?
Yes, it is. No, it's a different part of the question.
Okay, is number four of page two, the top, first question, I'm going to call that number four, is that on the current application?
Educational, it says educational background.
On the current application.
But it doesn't say which qualifies you to serve on the commission?
It just says, give it...
No, it isn't, but these, the initial application the city had was to be there for commissioner committee.
So it says, give us, describe your educational background, that's what it says today?
I'm sorry, tell me one more, can you repeat that?
So the question on the current application says, describe your educational background?
It just says educational background.
Okay.
And, and her point was, that's a generic for any committee or commission, so whether it's parks or whatever.
Right, so it's a good one, yeah, good, okay.
And so in this case, because we were tailoring this to specifically this commission, you know, maybe, maybe the word that's tripping people is the qualifies. You know, describe education or educational background, that might be helpful on this commission.
Just educational background, I like that. Anyway, go on, what's the next one?
The next question, is that on the existing one?
Professional experience?
Professional experience?
Yep.
Are you...
Yes, professional experience.
All right, okay, on the professional activity. And now, you're going to ask the same question about the next one?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
It's the civic slash professional organization membership.
Okay.
On the existing application.
Okay.
All right, next one? Government service, civic, or professional?
That is not, that was one that I, when I looked at applications from some of our neighboring cities, and that's why I got to work the detail, when looking at applications at neighboring cities.
Okay.
I can go down to the, yeah. The next one here, and then, the next is describe other qualifications, experience. There is, please state briefly why you are interested in serving on this commission slash committee towards you are submitting this application, and why you feel you are qualified.
That's on, that's on page one, though.
I'm sorry, I don't want to move that back, that question, I was...
Councilmember Alders. So he's saying on the bottom of page one, please state why you're interested in serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission, why you feel are qualified, and he's saying that duplicates the last question. Describe any other qualifications, experience, education, special background, interests, strengths, or abilities which you would like the council to consider. So replace one with the other.
Okay, and that's, and that's why what we're doing here, is looking at what we want to tweak.
Right.
So, do we want to take off on page one? So do we want to take off on page one?
I, if I were going to pick, choose between the two questions, I'd take off the one, yeah. Page one.
You want to strike the first one?
So strike the question number one, two, three.
Okay.
And then I would propose on page two, what we're calling question four, strike which qualifies you to serve. I would say just leave it as, describe your educational background.
Okay.
So-
And so the rest of the committee or council?
Which one are you talking about, no?
Number four, the, I'm calling-
The top one?
Educational background?
Yep.
Yeah, I agree with that. Do you, what do you think?
Yeah, just period, strike the rest.
Yep.
All right, so just period after background.
Correct.
And then number two, to make it a little less, um-
Councilmember Alders, you're saying number two-
Or number, question number five.
Five.
Describe your work experience, which I, I think we just need to, I don't, professional experience makes it seem like you have to be a professional. So I would soften that or change it to say, describe your professional, your work experience. And I don't even know if I like which qualifies because again, it's-
So I, I think, you know, if we're going to do it, um, the, the next one, which may be relevant to the commission, I think, you know, that, that applies on, relative, relative qualifies, you know, that they're saying, I've got this experience, whether that qualifies me or not, I think it's relevant to what we're doing. But, um, I think the qualifies probably is harsh.
Yeah.
You know, but, but it would be relevant, you know, if, uh, if, if, if you're going to put it on there, you would assume it to be relevant to what you're applying for. And again, I, I think part of this was because we had a generic form before. So if you're applying for a, a specific committee and you've got nothing, you have no experience in roads or equipment or anything.
How about we put, uh, describe your experience which may benefit the commission?
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
So, uh, Councilmember Rainville.
I, I missed what, I believe it was Councilmember Alders done. So right now it says, describe any other qualifications, experience, education, special backgrounds, interests, rights or abilities which you would like the city council to consider for the appointment you are seeking. So how do we, how does the council want that to read?
Now, we're, we're on question number five, the second one on page two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The professional experience, so-
Okay, so how, how do we look, how does council want that one, the last number five?
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Alders.
Mary, we wanted to read, describe your work experience which may benefit serving on the commission.
Okay, so describe your work experience which benefits-
Which, which may benefit. Describe your work experience which may benefit.
Which may benefit, okay.
The commission.
Serving on the commission, okay. All right, I did make that change.
Yeah.
Everyone like that?
Yeah, not as, um-
Was that now then or Ramsey?
Ramsey. Okay, so now we're on question, I'm calling it question six, page two. It says, describe your professional civic or community activities which may be relevant to the commission. I like that que, I think it's good. I, I don't mind that one.
Okay. So Councilmember Alders is saying that six as is.
As is, okay, thank you.
Question number seven.
Councilmember Alders.
Describe any government, service organizations, civic or professional activities which you have been, which you have been or are currently involved in. Is that a repeat of number six? We're asking for civic, community, professional. Should we combine them or feels like a repeat?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
The Councilmember Alders. So number six is, I think that would be relevant to the commission, like let's say you're a land use contractor, or you're build, a contractor that works with zoning ordinances, building codes.
Okay.
The next, the next one is anything else that, that maybe isn't relevant, but it shows your interest in, in being involved in something.
Okay.
That you understand community structures, um-
Gotcha. Gotcha.
So that would be why you probably put, I'm a coach.
Sunday school teacher.
Yeah. You know, I'm, I'm involved in other activities that may or may not be directly associated with planning, but you can see my involvement.
I, I, Mr. Mayor.
I, I lead mission trips to Africa.
Yeah, but that, to me, I would put under that. Because I, if I don't have, uh, professional or community activities, when you ask me to describe something, I would put on there, uh, it's relevant to the commission, I would say, well, I have, uh, I've been on committees and in my, uh, that I've served on committees that, in the school that I taught in, or something like that. Then I come to this one and I've already said that. I just think it's, it's a repeat of the same thing.
Well, but if, like, in this one, the way I'm, I'm interpreting it, you would say, in my professional experience as a teacher, I've been involved in committees and whatever it is, as relevant to the commission. The other one, you might, down below, you're saying, I, I'm also an avid gardener and I do missions trips. It would be things that may or may not matter to the commission.
Then I think we should put descri, describe any other activities or something. So we make it sound like they, at that point, they can get into off the record, I mean, off a commission thinking. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah. Should we put, describe any other, and then like, um, parentheses, professional, civic, community, service organization, et cetera, up in six? So that it gives them like, okay, here's what we're thinking?
Yes.
Well, I think if, if you do the one up there, you're, you're saying specific to the commission. So like you say, I've, you know, I've got my, I'm a licensed surveyor or I'm, you know.
But they could, that could come up in either one.
Well, I think that to the, the point that, that Councilmember Blake was saying is, this other one is, tell me the other things you do that have nothing to do with the commission, but tell us a little about who you are.
If, if you read it that way.
Yeah, so we worded it in a way that this one is specifically related to your application for the commission. This one just is, what else do you do? Because again, that tells us, you know, how well-rounded people are.
So Councilmember Blake-
I might also say that I, I, I go to meetings seven nights a week and I'm, I'm going to fit this in, but.
How do you want to read, how do you want to word number seven?
How would you like that last one worded, Councilmember Blake?
Well, I'm having a tough time, Mary, thinking that these two, if I were filling this out, I'd probably end up putting the same thing in both of them. I realize what you're-
Say any other?
I think, I realize what you're trying to do. You're trying to get in this number six, you want them to tell you something that's, uh, that relates to the commission. But, you know, uh, how many lands surveyors and former mayors and things like that are going to apply for this? Are they going to think that way? Or are they going to think, well, I think the way I will, I'll be valuable is that I have had a daycare and had to work with people for thirty years or something. Maybe, I'm wrong maybe, but it just, there's some, we got to somehow differentiate, I don't know.
I, I do like the one you mentioned, Councilmember Blake, on any other service organizations, civic or professional activities you'd like to, to list.
Okay.
Any other, so you, so like I say, it might be, we've, we've got people in town who have served on planning commissions in other cities. You know, that would certainly go in the one above. But like I said, their hobbies, their other activities, their other professional sort of recreational type things would go in number seven.
Okay.
So any other?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Hang on a second. Councilmember Greenberg, did you want?
No, I'm, um, the three of them are pretty closely related. Describe your work, describe your professional civic role, describe your government. Those three right in a row are all actually pretty similar. So I've just been cogitating, trying to, um, distill it into a, just like you guys are doing, except I'm not saying anything. I'm trying to distill it.
All right, Councilmember, uh, Rainville, you had something else?
So, Mr., oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I'm not sure if I'm in the queue or not. What if we were to eliminate what was in number seven and just stick with number eight, which also then kind of covers the number three-
There, yes.
On the front page.
I love it, Mary.
Yeah, me too. What do you think, Joel? Get rid of this.
Which one are we striking?
This one.
Seven, okay.
And go and, but leave this, because we're just kind of saying the same thing over and over.
So, Mr. Mayor?
That's part of the test, did they notice that?
Exactly.
We're looking for detailed people. Councilmember Alders.
So if I could summarize this, so if we go back to page one.
Yeah.
First question stands. Second question stands.
Do we need the second question? Does it matter if they have someone serving in the city? Do we want, why do we need to know this? Because it makes a difference to us if we hire them or not, if they have an immediate family member?
I, I think it's important to know.
I think for some nepotism, you'd probably want to know.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Councilmember Rainville.
That's fine.
So Councilmember Alders said, yes, we need that. We are looking for nepotism, so.
Okay, let's go forward.
Question number three was struck. And we're going to replace that with the last question. So we're calling that question number eight.
Okay. So move the last question to page one.
Yep. Then on page two, question number four is going to say, describe your educational background, period.
Okay.
Question number five, describe your work experience which may benefit serving on the commission.
All right.
Question number six, describe your professional civic or community activities which may, um, be relevant to the commission.
Okay.
And then we're done.
Yeah.
And I would, I would suggest, since, since when we're doing interviews, if we're talking amongst each ourselves, that we actually number them. So if somebody says, I have a question on this, we don't have to read through the whole questions.
I agree.
I have a question on one, two, or-
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I will number this. I just to clarify, you often started numbering with the, are you currently or having served? The three on the front?
Yep.
With the two on the front?
Correct.
Okay, all right, I will, I will do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders.
On page one, I, the commitment to the position, I believe if we, the first paragraph I'm okay with. The second sentence, the first sentence where we have to check yes or no, I think we need to put, I am willing to learn the planning and zoning policy, commission structure, meeting order versus I have read and understood.
No, yeah, I agree.
I'm willing to learn.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I, what I would say to, to Councilmember, um, Alders, is that commission, the planning commission policy and structure, meeting order, general procedure is only thirteen pages.
With, with the code of conduct.
Yeah, with the code of conduct, it's thirteen pages. So I, I would like to say, I want people to have read that and understand that there's an order to meetings, there's a, you have to be there on time, and, you know, there, there are, there is structure. And so I'd like them to, I think it's important, it's important to me that I know that they've read that and they understand what that means. And it's only thirteen pages, two side, if you do a two sided, it's six pages. So, um-
I think you're asking them to know the job before they get it.
I agree.
Mary, I think, this is Jason, I think you're asking somebody to know the job before they even get it. I think they have to have a commitment and a willingness to learn and understand the job. I don't think walking into the interview that they should have read all of the policies and procedures tied to the job.
I, I would say, any board that I've applied for, the basic structure of the board needs to be, this is standard. Did you, did you read what we do? There's, there's a whole bunch to learn. I mean, obviously, the question needs to be, you know, are you willing to abide by the comp plan or ordinance, those types of things? That's where you learn. You know, what the, the training part is the learning part, and obviously you want the commitment, but, but the basics, I mean, this is what Dale's been pushing for that we've been negligent on, is that, that we need to make sure people are actually looking at this and understanding. There's a code of conduct and we have basic policies. So you go in knowing what it is you're, you're looking to do. You don't need to understand the ordinance book or the comp plan. That you need to be willing to do. And I agree there that you, you know, there's, should be a commitment that, I'm willing to do the work. But that comes with training, that comes with time.
But you know, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Blake.
In education, you get hired and then you go through the orientation and you learn what your, what the, all the rules and regulations and the, and the plan, and you get the booklet and you, start, you don't have to know all that before you're hired. When you go through the interview, they decide, there's a, you know, a, a scoring and all that, and we decide, but they're not given something, and you better read this and decide if you can do this before you can be hired. No, they, you go in and they see what your qualifications are, and then they hire you, and then you go through an orientation where they say, now, there's the rules and regulations, this is what the expectations are. You wanted the job and you now, now that you learn exactly how it, how it goes. I mean, I think for us to expect people to read a thirteen page, uh, document before they can even be considered for a job, I, I just think they're already, we're already giving them a lot of information right here.
How, how about, at least the code of conduct? That's a page, two pages.
What is the code of conduct? I mean, for them, is it the same thing? For everyone?
No, there's, there's a, there's a policy, okay? And this tells you how you're doing things. But the code of conduct is, here's the purpose of the commission, roles and responsibilities, conduct of members, and how you communicate. So that's what's on the code of conduct.
Did I get that?
Mr. Mayor, is that what Dale Ames sent us?
Yes.
Oh, this is, sorry.
So Dale Ames sent you the policy, which is the first ten pages.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then he sent the code of conduct, which is the last two pages. And I think that that's appropriate to, to at least say, have you read it? And say, yeah, that, that sounds reasonable to me.
The code of conduct?
So Chair Ames.
Mayor, I have a list of eight things where I interviewed the, moving into the planning and zoning interview, some of the candidates. And the eighth one I have there, it says, did you review the planning and zoning city code and code of conduct as listed for the part of the application for appointment to the planning and zoning committee?
And that's what you've used in the past?
That's what I've used in the past. Did you review it? And I asked, we didn't ask them if they know it, because I don't even know what's in there.
No, no.
Interview it.
And, and the only, the question here was, did you read it?
Yes, did you review it? That's the question we asked them.
So that is historic.
Mr. Mayor?
In fact, these questions, these questions came from the leaders of the city that I had to give. These, these questions I asked them.
Okay.
And, and some of the things you're going over, you're making very complicated, they're simpler when I have them.
Right. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
I think this is appropriate. I think it's good enough the way it is. I think we softened enough of the other application language, this one here. If Dale had done it in the past and it's pretty standard, I'm not threatened by that. Whenever I sign up for anything, which has been myriads of positions here and there, I go through the same procedure, I've read the same language, I've seen the same documents, I've crossed the Xs, I've answered the questions. Knowing it's a formality, I have to simply go through in order to get the position, so I'm not threatened by that.
So you say the thirteen page thing, they should read that and go through it and say they understand?
Yeah, he's already, he's already-
That's what they've done in the past, has read your thirteen page.
When we hit, when we're planning the zoning, this interview, I'm not sure how the city council did it, or the town board did it, because back then, I want to tell you, some of the things they did was so illegal, it wasn't even fun.
The town board.
Yes, the town board.
So, so when you interview, you ask them if they read that thirteen page document?
Yes, that's one of the questions, one of the eight questions that I-
Okay, okay, good. So that's what you always do. And when did they get the document?
When they spoke about the document before they, as they came as candidates, it sure had the document.
So when they apply, they get the document?
I'm not, I'm not sure, I would think they would.
Well, they ask if they, if the question is, did you review it?
So in their application, we give them the document?
Yeah, can, can we print out that? The documents that we want them to read have to go with the application, so they can check yes.
Yes. And again, the boards I've applied for, they provide the documents.
So, you guys are good with that, I'm good with that.
All right. If that's what you've done, I'm all for it.
All right. Did you catch all that, Mary?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
It's my understanding that we are leaving it at this, that we will, along with the application, provide that, uh, that document.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks, Mary. The next one, meets on the fourth Tuesday at City Hall, Creedharms. I think, I think that's fine as it stands, right? Does anybody have, I, I don't have an issue with that one. And then are you willing to complete training? I'm good with both of those, team. What do you guys think?
I think that's fine. They're just questions that they have to do anyway.
So Councilmember Ald, Councilmember Alders is saying, uh, the last two paragraphs, last two questions on page one are good. Councilmember Blake agrees.
And we got a thumbs up.
So, remember, Greenberg got a thumbs up, so.
Mary, are you good with that?
Uh, thank you very much. I slid on, uh, to page three, the contract of interest. That is, um, on the current application. And that was something that was on all applications that I looked at.
Okay.
For neighboring cities. Uh, the information disclosure, that is on the current application. And again, that is on all applications for anything to city, city position. But I would ask Lori to do is to just confirm that the verbiage there, which is what I took, uh, is correct. So Lori would confirm that that is correct.
Correct with what?
The right subordinates, right?
I'm sorry, two people talking.
Lori, did you understand what she was saying?
Uh, Mary Conklin, I'm understanding I need to confirm the verbiage is correct. I'm guessing with any applications we have in-house, or with Minnesota statutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I want to be sure that the information under information disclosure is what is currently in statute and required on an application for a governmental agency.
Okay.
Got it.
Hi. I, I missed, we, I missed, we went down to information disclosure, so I'm sorry. All right, so you know Lori?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Excuse me, I will make those corrections, and I will submit them to Lori. So, if we could then, I will re- paint my motion, now that we've gone through the application. And then we devote the motion.
And one, one, one clarification here. If, if we're going to use the, uh, policies and the, the commission structure and code of conduct, did you have, did I see that you had corrected some of the verbiage there?
I, I I missed that, Lori, some corrections to the policy. And I can, um, if you guys have that in front of you. Let me get my email for some story.
Did you, you didn't print that one out, did you? For today?
That was last one.
I, I've got it on, on an email from today. But it's, we don't have hard copies.
Yeah, this is an email that Lori sent off today. So, let's see.
Which one is it?
Hang on, we're all shuffling papers here, Mary.
What are we looking for?
We are, we are looking for a redlined version of...
I read it this morning, but I don't know if I have it here.
No, I, I don't see it. I don't see it in what we got this, this evening. Oh, oh, hold it. Oh, what's this going on here? No, we have, we have interview questions.
Okay, right.
We have...
So, Mr. Mayor, this, this was not?
Oh, is it this planning commission, Mary's proposed changes?
Yes.
It was emailed off.
It's here. It's on this one, it starts on ordinance number 2021-01. And in the back is proposed ordinance corrections.
Okay.
This is not bad, so.
It's not bad?
Lori emailed comments that I had, and then some suggestions I had for the policy. So you go to the policy that you've all been looking at, the policy, the commission structure.
We have that, Mary. We have it.
Yeah, that's one of you?
Yeah, it's policy and procedures, May 2016.
Yes.
You guys have that? Yeah, hang on.
Someplace, I suppose.
Hang on, so it will be, it will be in, from our packet on Thursday, it says January 16th.
Oh, this one?
There's an email from Lori.
Planning and zoning commission information?
Says memo, yep, memo on the first, on the cover.
Page three.
Here.
Okay, so page three is the existing document.
So, then, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
If, if I have a board, I have everyone down there in front of us. I will slowly walk through the changes that I recommended.
Okay, hang on. So Dale, do you have your commission policy in front of you?
Yes.
Okay. Can you hear Mary well enough back there?
Aye.
Move up.
Really hard to hear.
Move up, please, Mary. Okay.
Set at the table.
Okay, so what Mary is going to do, so we have our document here that Dale sent out to everybody, and was in our packet last Thursday. And there were some clarifications and cleanups on this. So she's going to slowly go through these and point out what they were, so we can have a current understanding of what we would be handing to applicants.
Okay.
All right, so Mary, you're up. We're on section one.
What page was she on?
Page one.
Page one.
It says page one at the bottom.
I'm sorry, missed that, Mary?
Section four.
Section four.
Okay.
It currently says shall be the first regular meeting in the month of January. I would change, uh, my proposed change is to strike in the month of January, and so, and will, would read, shall be the first regular meeting of each year. There are two years of a week, there are many months, I think January is longer, maybe January, February.
Okay.
So, when they look at this, um, it would be their first meeting of the year.
Mm-hmm.
Which may not be January. Could be, but may not come. Want to show that and say the first of...
Yeah. Next.
Okay with that?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, okay. Then, the next one is section five, regular meetings. And the last sentence reads, any regular meeting following on a holiday shall be held on the following business day at the same time and place. I would like it to read, any regular meeting following on a holiday shall be held on a date agreed upon by committee members at the same time and place.
That's good.
My reasoning for doing that is, our meeting, the commission meetings are Tuesday, the next day is Wednesday. Wednesday is a busy night for people, um, that have other committees and or religious activities. So, gives the commission the ability to reschedule.
So you're saying, date agreed upon by, at, at the same time and day of week?
Or, it would be at seven o'clock at City Hall, but agree upon a date, maybe it's that Thursday.
Okay.
And, and act, and after what it should be doing is in January, your first meeting, you should be looking at the calendar for the upcoming year, to see if you have any contracts and dealing with it at that time. Rather than dates until the month before they'll, the date. But this is the way, um, a date agreed upon by the members, not the automatic.
All right.
Is that agreeable?
Yes.
Everybody says yes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, the next one is section seven, quorum. I would add a new sentence, that the quorum must be kept during the entire meeting in order for action to be taken on any matter before the commission. Me, it's obviously a quorum, but distinct.
That's if you're not on Zoom. Because it doesn't work on Zoom. I think it should be accepted.
So with that, except the vote of council, I get out of here.
Dale, Dale was saying that that could be a problem with Zoom, because people drop out on Zoom, but...
So, Mr. Mayor?
Correct.
So, uh, Mary, this is Joel Greenberg. What happens then if you're halfway through your planning and zoning meeting on Zoom, and someone's phone drops them, like we've seen in our, in our council meetings, we've seen in a planning and zoning meeting? Does then everything from that point become, or, or that point afterward, afterward become null and void? And if they can't resolve it within five minutes, they call the rest of the meeting off?
Mr. Mayor, to Councilmember Greenberg, uh, that is correct. And, and the Zoom meeting does, you know, bring another issue into it, so we have to have some leeway to say, let's give them five minutes, let's break, let's get them five minutes, get them back online. But if we can't get them back online, then there's not any, there isn't quorum.
But anything done up to that point is already done.
Yes. And then, I mean, it would be no, if you and Jason walked out tonight, um, we wouldn't have quorum. You know, they have two members, and if I wasn't. You have, you have to have quorum, you can still have discussions on items, but you cannot take any actions.
You can't vote after that. But anything they voted on prior to that is accepted.
Right, yeah.
Why, why can't you do like we did? We kept on with the meeting, and then we got Barry back on, and we have him back on. This happened also with the, the other night.
That's what she's saying. The attempt is to get them back on.
Okay.
But if they're permanently, let's say they decided to, I got another meeting I got to get to, and I'm done. It'd be the same as whether on Zoom or here. If we don't have a quorum anymore, whatever we decided when we had a quorum stands. But we can't vote anymore once we lose our quorum.
She said about five minutes, and then it ends.
Yeah, I, I think we, we determine what that is.
I don't think, I don't think five minutes, with a Zoom situation would be fair, because I think it took 15 minutes at least for Barry to get back on, and even because, if, if Harold hadn't been down here at City Hall, it would have took until Jason, uh, not Jason.
Rob.
Rob, till Rob got on, and it took him, it must have took him 15, 20 minutes in the...
Again, I don't, I don't think that we're locking in on five minutes.
Oh, I thought you were locking in on that.
She was just saying, give it, give it five minutes and try and get on. I think it, it, it depends on what's going on in the meeting. If you have just discussion items left, it doesn't matter. If you have another vote left, and it's a critical vote, and it's timely, you take what it takes to get on, and you ask people to, to bear up. If it's, if it's something that could easily be tabled, and you lost your quorum, it might be more trouble in its work to try and get somebody back online, so. Again, I, I do think that the, the flexibility required by Zoom can be taken into account. I think it's, it's germane to say, especially in person, you got to maintain your quorum to maintain voting, that's just law. If you don't have a quorum, you can't, you can't vote something forward. You can still talk about it, but you just can't vote. And if you don't have a quorum, then you can talk about it, because the open meeting is not a...
Open meeting, no.
Hey, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders.
So it's 8:47. Mary, how, how many changes do you have left? Do we want to go through one of these line by line, or should...
There, there are, there are.
Okay.
I, I, so the next one?
Well, let me, let me, let me...
Ten?
Let me ask this. We, the other way we could do it is, we all got a copy of this.
Mm-hmm.
If anybody disagrees with what's in that copy, send that to Lori, send to Mary to fix.
Okay.
And if there's major disagreement, then you're going to have to...
We'll bring it up.
Bring it up again.
The...
But, but again, this is, you know, we want to clean it up.
So we can get it posted.
So we can get it posted.
Do we, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
Uh, if we've, I went through it today. So if we agree with it, do we just leave it then? Or are we supposed to contact Lori and say we agree with it, or what?
I think, I think it's clear as saying, I'm good, because then everybody knows you responded.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Yes, I would ask that people look at the email that Lori sent out this morning, it stopped on section 10, there uh, four, five sections left, uh, minor, minor changes, you'll see why I did them. Uh, and then you can send a date or a name to Lori. And she can send it to me, and I can treat accordingly.
Perfect.
Perfect, right, and, and you'll send a copy of it to Dale.
Mr. Mayor, we finished with...
So, do you get that, Dale? So, any, anything that, in red, if you, if you disagree with it, send that to Lori. If you agree with, looks good to me, send, send a thumbs up to Lori.
Are we finished with this application, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville, are we finished with the application portion?
We, we are, Mr. Mayor, and I will make those changes and get that to Lori.
Okay.
So, so again, then I just want to repeat my motion.
Okay.
And my motion is that the council, uh, direct staff, it posts the planning and zoning commissioner opening according to the draft commission appointment procedure. And that the interviews be held until after the council discussion, and agrees on the job description, posting procedure, qualifications, and interview questions at our February 18 council planning session.
All right, did we have a second to that?
Jason.
Jason, okay, we had a motion second, it's clarified. Anything else?
I have one thing.
Councilmember Blake.
The people who've already applied, do they have to reapply?
I would say yes.
So then, do you have to contact the two that already applied and give them this application and the 13-page deal?
Mary, council, I can do that.
Okay, that's just what I wanted to know.
All right. Anything else? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And any opposed, we ran out of those, so it's, motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Good work, Mary, a lot of work.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I would like to give a despite of the participation on this, thank you.
Thank you for your hard work in, in putting these together. We, uh, we got a little confused last week as to why you were doing it and where it was going. And I, I think now that we've got all the information, and we understand that you're just compiling it for us, we appreciate that, and we can go forward.
Well, it's good to have Dale here to clarify some things that's already being done.
All right. So, next.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Um, I, it was the first one, I think we've gone through everything that was in there.
Have we?
So the, the clerk's memo, you've sent out an updated version of the spreadsheet of other cities today?
Yes.
So you want the, uh, council can look at that for future discussion? That's not an action we have to do anything on tonight? Understand that right?
Yes.
Okay, so, again, Mary sent out other addition, additional information today, so you want to take a look at that. And Lori, if you could also make sure Chair Ames gets that, additional information that Mary sent out in response to your memo. All right? Anything else on the P and Z commission? Seeing and hearing none, we got 10 minutes to wrap up a few things here. Fee schedule.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Uh, so, so, Mr. Mayor, I kept forgetting to email you on this. So you had continuation under it? Is that because that's what I sent you, because it was continued from another, or are you looking to still get input and continue this to March?
Mary, council, I have put continuation on as we were continuing it from January's meeting.
Okay, all right. So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I don't know how closely anyone else has looked at it. I have submitted some changes to Lori, and she incorporated those in there. I still have some additional changes that I'd like to send to Lori to see if she considers them. And so I would move that we tabled it to March, and, and I'll submit my, my changes, suggestions to Lori for discussion in March. And maybe Lori would forward them to council, so that come March, they're already been discussed.
All right, I would second that. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders.
From a process standpoint, isn't this Lori's job to determine the fee schedules? And then she brings a proposal to us and we approve it? I mean, I'm struggling to understand why is, I mean, I think it's great that Mary's doing a bunch of this legwork, but it feels like Lori owns the fee schedule and the recycling plant, and the hours, and the staff. She's determining for us if a thing is profitable or not, working with the accountants, and makes recommendations based on what's getting dropped off or dumped off. So, I mean, we can do this, but it feels like Lori should have the ability to take this and bring it to us and say, hey, here's the fee schedule. I made the changes based off of how much it costs to actually get the stuff out of here, or how much hassle it is to work with it, so that we can let her do that role. So, I mean, I'm fine with Mary doing this, I just look at, I view her role as she's running the recycling center, she knows what the costs are, she knows what staff she has to work at, and she knows, based on her staff's feedback, cardboard's a pain.
I don't know, just, just to catch you off there, I don't know that the, it's not just the recycling fee schedule. It's, it's, there's a variety of things on the fee schedule. Councilmember Rainville?
Um, Councilmember Alders, um, I, I hear where you're coming from, Jason. The fee schedule encompasses more than just the recycling center, it's every fee that we charge within the city.
And who's ultimately accountable for that?
We are, because they come back to us and say, why are you charging this much?
But who do we appoint to do that for us?
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm not hearing this from speaking.
So, finish up, Councilmember Rainville. You are speaking.
Okay, so, the fee schedule encompasses, the fee we charge or the policies we have for everything within the city, not just the recycle center. And so, look, look, I have a question on a labor rate, whether or not the city is being compensated appropriately. There is a spelling error that needs to be corrected. I have a question on whether or not there should be an asterisk next to two different things, because there's an asterisk that says do this, but it doesn't have an asterisk by any item number, so you don't know what item number you're supposed to do that with. And then I have a question on the deposits that are now going to be required of people who use our town hall. The, the, the groups that use it on a consistent basis. There, there's never been a rental, um, we haven't charged rental for different groups, so we haven't charged damage deposit, key rental. And, and in this new fee schedule, there is a stipulation where, like the mountain seniors would have to put down every time they use the building, a fifty-dollar damage deposit, and then get that damage deposit back. So I would just like to be able to have conversations, if that's something that the council feels is appropriate. Then the end one, it is our responsibility to approve it, and we need to be comfortable with what we're approving.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
I think what Mr. Alders is seeing is that, I feel like our council sometimes takes on more responsibility than we have to, because you've gotten used to a situation in the past where you had, you didn't feel as trustworthy about the situation, but we have hired someone that we all trust and feel she's doing a really great job. And I think some of these things we should leave in her lap. First of all, it would end up being less time-consuming minutia that, I know you're gonna say we're responsible in the end, but I also feel like I trust Lori, and we're gonna see it before we pass it. But to go over every little thing and not leave it in her lap, some of these things we have to leave and believe that the person we hired can handle it, and that we don't have to have our nose in every little thing, or why do we have a city clerk? If we feel that the council has to do everything? I mean, we, there's something called appointing people to do their jobs and letting them do it, without the council having to be part of everything that happens. And that's how our council runs. And I don't think every council runs that way, Mary, even though you might think so, and so might the mayor, I don't think they all do.
First of all, please don't presume to think for us.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't think that they do. I didn't say what you think, I said I don't think that they do.
Oh, but you said Mary and the mayor may think they do.
Because you've told me, that's why.
Councilmember Rainville? Councilmember Rainville?
Just, Councilmember Blake, I, I trust Lori, but this is not the issue. The issue is when I see something that should be corrected, this is an official document, you know, fortunately, I'm elected and I don't get nicked for spelling errors, or, or something like that. But this is an official document, and it should go out in a professional manner. So that was one of the things. The second is, we're, as councilmembers, we are responsible for making sure that the city recruits their top for any outlay of labor. And so that was another piece, of the general labor piece, spelling errors. And then again, this is a new policy that council hasn't seen before, about now charging a deposit to the lions, the seniors, or the festival, when they come to use the building. And I think there should be some question on that.
Mary, council, can I just explain that one just real quick? The reason for that is because we discontinued our cleaning service about a year ago, which saves us $400 a month, and staff is now cleaning the office and the city hall. So by instilling a cleaning checklist and a deposit, we make sure that whoever rents our facility puts it in the same condition that they found it in. If they do, they come back to get their deposit back, no problem. So once they've used the facility, we come over and inspect it, they can come back after noon the next day, and they receive their check back, it's never cashed.
And, and, and I think that, the, the real question is, it's, one, there's some clarification. I don't think she's trying to rewrite the fee ordinance. It's, here's some things that Lori may have missed, or whoever put it together. Liz did it, so just some clarification. If it's, you know, here's some things that we're not voting on. We do it if we're changing, and, and Lori brings this to us. She, she met with the building official and said, these things need to go up, these things need to go down. She did all that work, she brought it to us. This is simply cleaning it up, and there's a change, which Lori would bring to us, saying in the fee schedule, you may not have seen this before, but just as she just explained now.
So does that happen in this council meeting?
Typically, or through a memo. We weren't aware of it. And so if you're looking at the fee schedule, and the question is, I've never seen this before, then that would be when she presents the fee schedule, and we're supposed to do this every year. We're supposed to review the fee schedule, Lori evaluates, we're getting the coverage, we're getting reimbursed appropriately for our expenses. The fee schedule's not to make money, it's to cover expenses. She then updates that annually with contracted staff and presents it to us. We just haven't gotten to it yet, because this has been pushed off and pushed off and pushed off. This is another one of those December things, we're trying to wrap up in December. So, in that, knowing that Lori's gonna be presenting it to us for approval, Mary's just saying, there's a couple of things I've noticed. She's bringing it up to us, only because it's before us. Normally, she would just say, if, if you saw something in the fee schedule that was inaccurate, you'd send a note to Lori, saying, by the way, I was looking at the old one and the new one, there might be a typo, we used to charge fifteen dollars, now we're charging seventy-five. Well, she would bring to the council, no, it really wants to be seventy-five because. But she will do that when she presents it to us to vote on, saying, here's the changes. All Mary's doing is saying, note these things. So she's not rewriting the fee schedule, she's just saying, note it because you're gonna present it to us. And, and this is the first time we've heard, and it makes reasonable sense, we're not spending $400 for somebody to clean this, whether it was used or not, but if somebody is using it, we need to make sure we're covered. So that's something new in the fee schedule, because the people who use it that never did that before are gonna call you, and you, and you, and me, and say, what the heck is this? And if we never heard it from Lori, we're gonna go, I don't know. Well, you voted on it, why did you approve it? So Lori knows that, that's why she updates it, she presents it to us, we approve it.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders.
So, high level, I mean, I, and if that's the process, that's great, I mean, that's not what I'm hearing tonight, so, I mean, to me, it feels like Mary's digging into the, I mean, when we get to the asterisk level, it feels like that is too much detail for us to be working on.
Right, and, and, and that, that to me would have been just send it to Lori.
So I'm like, if Mary wants to dig into that level of detail and Lori's okay with that, I mean, to me, if someone was checking me that close, I would be like, don't. But if Lori can handle that, that's up to her. But I look at this as Lori needs to present us, here's what the plan for the fees need to be, based on how we run our business, which is the city of now then. And if there's changes, she should note those changes, and we discuss those, and the cleaning would be one of them, so that we're aware of it, but she should be leading this discussion for this, and then we vote on her recommendations.
Right. I, okay, to me, that's what I understood. The fact that Mary found a few things, she wanted to make sure were clear. That's something that, again, typically would be done directly with Lori.
Okay.
I guess, Mary, council, I, I wasn't under that impression either, so I, I would appreciate that if that's the way you want it handled. So this is in a very draft form yet, because I've been waiting for direction from council, because that's what I thought the direction was going, not that I was leading the fee schedule. But I can get all the information, and as I said, this is draft and everything in red are proposed changes that I would like to explain, and was hoping that I could have at the workshop, but I wasn't able to be at the workshop last week.
Yeah, in, in the past, it, it was typically the clerk treasurer would present, you know, in conjunction with contractors or, or others that are, that reflect changes in the fee schedule. This, this is up, this is down, and here's why.
So, can we, it says continuation, so can we table this, give Lori a month to finish this thing, and then present this next month, so that we can vote on the fee schedule based on her recommendations?
I thought that's just what we did. We tabled it till next month.
Mr. Mayor, that was my question.
Okay.
Are you good with that?
I'm good with that, thank you.
Perfect.
All right. How quickly can we get through a couple more things here? Recycling.
Mary, council, I didn't take that one, or start it anyways, if there's more people that would like to speak on it. So I just passed with coming back in February to the council meeting with the recycling program agreement, and whether or not we're abiding to that program. And I've reviewed the contract and have gone through some of the highlighted areas that we are required to do, is that each household shall have the opportunity to recycle at least four broad types of materials. We are doing that. Recycling, including the organics program, so we operate in compliance with all federal, state, and local laws, ordinances, rules, and regulations. Municipality shall implement a public information program that contains at least the following components, which is a promotional mailing and promotional advertisement. That's done in our newsletter fall, spring and fall newsletters. The public information components listed above, which I just said, and the opportunities to recycle are done. I'm recommending the Heritage Festival and the Farmer's Market, and I believe that that is being done as well, I'm not sure about both.
No, the Heritage Festival is, I'm, I'm not sure about the Farmer's Market.
Okay.
Do you know, Mary?
I'm looking at, there really isn't much review from the Farmer's Market. So that is something that we can talk about.
Okay, so that would cover the requirement for the two community outreach activities. So that was the only thing that we're not, I wasn't sure about. And then the municipality shall regularly attend the bi-monthly solid waste abatement swap meetings, and I was wondering, Mary, is that something you do as the liaison? Because we do not have a staff member doing that right now.
So, so Lori, I have not, but I can put that on my calendar.
Okay, and if you're not able to, if you could let staff know, and we'll go in your place, so we're making sure that somebody's attending that.
And Mary, is that something you were doing in the past, anyway?
I have done in the past, and then with COVID, they weren't having them. I think they're now doing through Zoom, so I will get back in the link, let's move there.
And then the last item that was on there that we needed to check off to make sure we're doing, is the municipality shall offer a minimum of one spring and or fall recycling drop-off event. And that is where the item on the agenda is for the Anoka County Spring Fall Recycling Drop-Off Days. So if we can get those dates in order, then we know that we are covering everything in the contract, and we're being compliant.
All right, so the, the dates are the typical dates that we do, we discussed at the workshop, work session. Whether the council still wants to be the facilitators of that, we have yet to determine that, but we can deal with that in future. But right now, the, the dates in May and September that were given to us were acceptable, I believe.
Okay.
So.
I think, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
When I wrote them down on my calendar, I think they ended up being on Sundays, both dates you gave, so they, it was probably the Saturday you want to.
Saturday.
Yeah, I thought so, but, so it's probably last year or something, you know?
And does anybody know those offhand? I wasn't at the workshop.
Was the ninth?
Mr. Mayor, it should be the May eighth and September eleventh.
Yeah, that's it, okay. We had the ninth and the twelfth.
So that, that's right, we'll have to set the column.
Yeah, so they, they had it wrong in there.
I think until noon, correct?
Yep, it's one o'clock, it's, it's eight to one. And yes, the, the chart that they gave us from Anoka County does have the twenty, twenty-one dates wrong. They have May ninth and September twelfth. So you're saying it's the eighth and the eleventh, Mary? That'd be the Saturdays?
Correct.
And Councilmember Rainville, as the liaison, are you sending that to the county, or would you like staff to do that?
I, I won't, I won't send that to the county.
Okay.
I'm not sure where they got those dates from.
Well, probably cut and paste. All right, anything else on recycling?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I, I do a motion I'd like to make in regard to the recycling center. And it said, and most council approve a Thursday, March fourth, twenty twenty-one work session to discuss, among anything else that we've put on the agenda, the recycling center hours, staffing, profit loss, and implementation. and implementation of recommendations discussed during our July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty building tour. I also ask, in order for us to have a good quality discussion, that staff provide by next March first, what are, what our labor costs are associated with staffing to center for the current twenty-one hours that it's open, in addition to an option for a thirty and thirty-five hour coverage. And that would be total loaded labor cost. A breakdown of whether we make a profit or a loss on the types of items we're taking in. You know, I know we say the disposal of the metal just pretty much covers the, the pollen cost. But what are they, are they giving us anything or does this house an automatic wash? And then costs associated with the building tour recommended, recommended interior and exterior building improvements. We talked about lighting, cameras on the east and west end. And then internal changes, bin signage, that wet pack failure, and re-arrangement of the center.
That sounds like a tall order.
That was one motion?
Yes, yes. And then I'll explain why it's so detailed.
Well, I'll second it so I can hear your explanation.
Okay. So why it's detailed is we've had conversations over and over and over and over again about the recycle thing. But yet we've not had in front of us documentation to look at to help us determine how to move forward with the recycling center. And it's, I remember Councilmember Greenberg, it was three meetings ago or two meetings ago, you said that we're just, we keep kicking the can down the road.
What?
What if we.
Keep kicking the can down the road.
Have information in front of us, information that helps us make decisions. And so what we want to do with that recycling center, we can stop kicking the can and we can get the job accomplished.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alders.
So is this a, another great opportunity to delegate this to Lori to come up with a proposal and look at what the income is, what the expenses are, what the hours are based on her current staffing, and what her proposal should be? And I don't know if that can be done by March first, but it feels like another good opportunity for us to empower Lori to figure out what the city of now then should do with that. And for this team to review those recommendations based on, she's got all the detail and all the data. I don't know if I, I mean, I can go through it, but it feels like we should let her go through it and make a presentation to us as she's our, she's the one that's going to do it. She's got all the data, let her make a recommendation to this team.
I think that becomes the result. I mean, and Mary's obviously detailed in this. But in the recommendation, you would assume that, what I was listing up her questions here, you would assume that to be part of it. If Lori's making a recommendation, I'm making the recommendation because, you know, this last year, we heard we were losing money. We were way ahead in money, we were breaking even on some things. You know, you just signed off one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in expenditures. Did you look at any of that? You know, well, you start looking at hauling. We just spent six hundred and sixty dollars in hauling. How much did we get from that hauling? And are we breaking even or are we not? So Lori Jaeger just sat here and said, hey, you're about a thousand dollars. But, but should, you know, if, if recycling here, do we, are we charging enough for it? And again, these are your main questions. Now, certainly Lori can take a look at that and say, this makes sense, and here's my recommendation. But when you start looking at, at the details of some of our billings, you just want to make sure because it's not obvious all the time because we don't have a revenue expense tabulation and everything. I don't know. You know, there are times we used to make money on cardboard and paper. But there's other times the hauling cost is more than it's worth. And those are the types of things that you just can't assume and just keep doing. And, and because we haven't addressed that in the past, you know, simple things can be put in place to say, this is how we know we're doing it, we're doing it, you know. Appliances, we charge ten bucks for appliance. Okay, how many appliances got paid for this month and how many do we haul off? Pretty straightforward thing. But that helps you make a decision. We talked about it before, we know when people are staffing it, people don't tend to drop things without paying for them. But if we find out that we're hauling off three hundred appliances a month and we're getting paid for two hundred, then that argues towards the staffing. You know, let's not have it open if, if nobody's there. So I think those details are helpful in making good decisions. Or, you know, and, and certainly as staff comes up with that saying, here's my recommendation, here's why. We're making money or we're not, and here's, just explain it to you. And that's, that is traditional where staff comes in and saying, here's what I'm recommending and here's why. And I think Mary's just helping think out, here's the questions I would have if I were in that discussion.
Yeah, and I get that, and I think that's great. I just want to make sure we're, as a team, because we've got an interdependency between the right recycling center and the fee schedule and the cost, right? So I would look to Lori to not send a hundred emails to us that's got, here's everything that's been shipped, here's all the expenses that have come in, and let us, it's like, let her work on this thing.
I don't, I, I didn't hear that at all.
Put a presentation together and let's go through it so that we understand, what does the building need to be successful, what does the staffing need to look like? What do we need to do from an expense standpoint? Where do the fees need to go if we're going to continue to do this? And what has been our profit loss? It's like, can we let her wrap that up and take a crack at that?
Sure. And, and, and what I heard was, here's the questions we'll be asking, so go at it. And, and the, the point is, we haven't done anything there.
So if that's an ask, first, I mean, we got to give her clarity so she knows what the expectation is. And then we got to get commitment on her what the right date is because it's February ninth. We got another meeting the eighteenth. Is March first realistic to get this done? And I think we need to let Lori tell us what that date is and then commit to that date. But I don't want to assign March first and have her working twenty hours a day for something that, if we kicked it down the road for three years, April first might not hurt either.
And, and I don't know that that's an ironclad or a set in stone. I mean, it was just time bounded and, and it's realistic to say, what is realistic? I mean, Lori knows the discussions we've had about recycling in the past. Mary certainly articulated a number of questions she'll be asking. So what's a realistic date?
Yeah. So can you noodle on that and tell us what a good date is? And then what questions do you have for us so that you can be successful?
And, and again, that's, that's what I would expect. You know, and I've talked to Lori about, you know, she's, she is respectful at the meeting. She doesn't, you know, she, she's careful not to push back. But that is appropriate to say, I will take that into consideration. Here's the questions, having heard Mary's questions, here's the questions I would have, and here's a date when I can present that. But I think that's important for the council to capture. Because that's what happens is we talk about it. And then, you know, it was last year, we talked about it.
Yeah.
And, and we talked about, so, so when things get on an agenda or on a list, it's important to time bound them so that we know April first looks like a good day right now. Life happens, if something happens, Lori says, I thought that was going to be good, but. Just like, you know, when I have to do reports for the boss, it's, I thought April first was good, but we had this business, this disruption in business. So I'm moving, you know, I'm asking for permission to move this or whatever. But, but that, I think is the important part is, is as a council, we asked at the workshop, do we want to keep doing recycling? And we said, yes, that's important in now then and surrounding communities. How do we want to handle that? So these are the types of questions. Now Lori has that available. And what I would recommend, Mary, again, just, I don't know how much you were able to capture, Lori, but just send her whatever you just said so that she can factor that in and then she can make the presentation to us. And that the recommendation I would have is Lori to get back to us with a reasonable date.
And then I guess I'm expecting, will you put together a PowerPoint so we can look at it on the screen? So that we can go through, if we think, what are the building upgrades that we think we want to look at? What are the costs that we want to look at? What are the fees associated with that? What are the hours and what are the staff? And then those factors, in addition to what Mary said, should give us a background of, here's the last couple of years. I thought I heard earlier today, we get about thirty thousand dollars from the government or from a, or from the county, and then there's another twenty thousand dollar grant for improvement. So it sounds like we've got some money to work with. There's about twenty thousand dollars in revenue. I have no idea what the expenses are, but you know what that's going to be. So then you can be the project leader and take us through the project.
And, and again, that's all we've been asking.
Perfect.
I, I don't know there's anything different than what Mary was saying. It just, she was articulating the question, so.
Good.
So at this point, Lori will evaluate the, the information that we was discussing tonight as far as the interest the council has in all of these areas. Revenue, hours, operation, building, improvement. And will evaluate what it would take for her to put that presentation together for the council and give the council a, a date.
And Mary, council, this is something that I already have been working on. The issue.
You've been holding out on us.
No, we were having trouble last year and this year with getting the correct numbers. We were having a really tough time with that for some reason, trying to figure out, because things were being coded in the wrong place. And we had just switched into a different financial program. We've, we're getting through the bumps still on that, but there were some things that we weren't coding correctly. And now we're getting them coded in the right place. We're understanding where our losses are, where our profits are. We're understanding what reports we can be printing to get a good picture. And one of the things that has really changed is the shutdown. And now we don't have the help from the county. So then our numbers are totally different than they were in the past. And so it's been a little bit more of a challenge. It's not a black and white number right now. So that's why you might have heard, well, we think we're making money. No, maybe we're not, but now we are. And so now we know, yes, we are making a profit at the recycle center. We understand that the council wants to keep the recycle center going. And the only, the only hurdle I think I'll have a trouble with is if we're going to make a design change to the recycle center. I know when we've been over there and looked at things, everybody has a different view of how it should look inside. And I even have a different view of how it should look inside. And, and my, my view might be that the doors stay locked at all times and they have windows that they can put their things in. And that might not be somebody else's view. So that would be the hard part for me is understanding what council would like to see the building look like. I won't be able to come up with a price on that.
Yeah, so I, I think after our, our building tour last year when we were in the recycling center, that was one of the things that came up. Because we used to have windows, they still wanted them changed.
That's what I'm understanding.
And I, I think the agreement or the understanding at the time was that if we wanted to keep the recycling going, and at the time, we thought we were losing money. And so your recommendation was, we can't subsidize this at three thousand dollars a month and, and plan on expanding. You know, we don't want to lose even more money. So once we, now that we think we've stabilized that portion of knowledge, the question was, if we thought we were breaking even or making money on it, did we want to take a tour of other facilities, get a best practices, and then come together and say, okay, from a high level standpoint, Lori, what we're looking for is this. We want the building to reflect the city in this way. Go to it and tell us what it's going to cost. And I, that's where I thought we left it last year. If we knew the money, then we take the tour, we come back with ideas, we do the big picture, and you do what you did at the office. I know what you're looking for, let me at it. Is that what you're understanding?
That was my understanding, yes.
Okay, is that the council's understanding? After our meeting last year in recycling?
Well, Mr. Mayor, it's, my only question is, just so many voices and so many, so much input and shuffling through all that. I'm wondering if Joe and Lori and maybe one other person on the committee would be better suited than for every one of us to be coming up with our own ideas and trying to.
I don't, I don't think we're coming up with our own ideas. The, the idea, those that went on the tour of recycling centers in the county before learned a lot. And, and they were able to say, I really like that. And, and so there was a common knowledge. So when, when Lori and those that went on the tour said, do you remember what we saw there? It was more bouncing ideas off each other saying, that's what we're looking for. We come back, we don't say, I want green containers here and I want this here. We say, we want to, remember what we saw over in that city? We want to incorporate that. We want this to reflect from a high level, this. Lori gets the detail part. We just come in and say, we want it to, you know, we want it brightly lit. Those crummy little lights in there, it's a dark, crummy looking place. But if we put some nice LEDs in here, we, we spruce it up in, in general fashion like this, then Lori, like I said, she does to the recycling center what she did to the city offices. And she comes back and says, here's what it's going to cost, am I good to go? So, but, and if council members don't want to take that tour, that's okay too. But I, I think that there's some cities doing some pretty good things and it's, it's helpful to, to see what they're doing and, and incorporate. In business, we call it best practices. You know, go out there and beg, borrow, and steal the best practices from somebody else wherever you can.
Benchmark steal shamelessly.
All right, so are we good to go on that?
You guys?
All right, employment policy, employment personnel policy.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would move that we tail this to March during the time of night.
I will second that.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion tabled. Upper Rum River Water, Joel. Better number than last year?
Yep. So, Mr. Mayor, with the last time we were together as the Upper Rum, all six cities voted for this draft budget. So I moved that, we approve it. We approved the Upper Rum Watershed Management Organization's two thousand twenty-two draft budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would second that.
I have a motion from Councilmember Greenberg to approve the draft budget, two thousand twenty-two Upper Rum River Water Management Organization. We have a second, Councilmember Rainville, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I would like to thank Councilmember Greenberg and prior Councilmember Brian for their work on this.
Yes.
They really helped our minds and were able to reduce our cost, so I appreciate that.
And I, I like the fact it's ten thousand dollars plus difference from two thousand twenty's. So, thank you. All those in favor, the motion?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Lori, can you send out an email to?
Actually, Jamie.
Jamie, let them know that the city approved it.
All right. Item fourteen, for the good of the council. I make a motion that we allow planning and zoning to hold their meetings in person according to the governor's guidelines.
I second it.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. I move that we meet together for a council planning session on Thursday, February eighteenth, six o'clock in this room to talk about goals, mission, high-level planning for the year so that we can. so that we can agree on what we're trying to do so council can get, give direction to staff on our high level perspective so they can plan tactical projects for the year. So I would plan on that for Thursday, February 18th at 6 o'clock. Any prep work? Yes. Okay. What, what, so if you went through the, the training and they were talking about the goals, the visions in the LEAK training this, two weeks ago? The leadership portion, what I'm looking for is for us to, to determine our vision, our mission, our strategies, council's goals that will then relate to staff task. So big picture, I'm looking at how we communicate. This is where we would discuss when, what deadlines we would have. And once we understand where we're going as a city, what does that translate into effective communication? So I would, I would advise those that were on the council last year to review our meeting with Pam, because this is where we discussed a lot of this stuff, last winter with Pam. And then for Jason, I would say, based on the training that you got from the LEAK on the role as the city leader, will be a big part of that.
Gotcha.
Right?
In the middle of it.
So, is there a motion? Do we have a second yet?
I'll second.
So a motion and a second?
I'll second.
All right, Councilmember Rainville seconds. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So motion carries unanimously. Lori, would you please notify the Lions if they had an intention on meeting that night? I think they're still doing Zoom, but we will have the building.
So, two agenda items that night, planning, leadership, future. Second one was planning and zoning.
Yep.
Mayor and Council, is that something you want me at or is it council only?
I think it would be helpful if you wouldn't be required, but it certainly, I hear what we're talking about, this would be a good-
I can be.
Because we will be talking about the planning and zoning too, so we'll-
So you're talking about that meeting, we're going to talk about the city mission, the city vision, how we communicate. Are we talking about personal stuff, vision, mission and all that too?
Well, as a city, I mean, what, what we'll do is similar what Pam did last year. We'll, we'll have ideas, we'll probably put them on the board and say, which of these things, which of these would we say are our goals? Which, which of these are our values? So, like I said, it, it's, it's very close to what Pam started leading us into last year. What are our values so that we can develop goals and mission from those?
Okay.
All right, so we had item, actually, we skipped over 12 and 13. Item C, resolution contract with Metro Animal Control. Mayor, you wanted that pulled?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, it's Miss Price, but I had some questions earlier on the contract. What I'm wondering is, the, the contract with North Metro talks about the one or two year contract, and nowhere in this resolution does state what you're preferring, one or two year contract, which you're recommending.
Mayor and Council, yep, Councilmember Rainville, I did get your questions and I did not get a chance to respond by email, but I did bring my answers with me.
Okay.
So I do have a call into North Metro to find out if there's a, a cost difference, if we were to commit to the two year or would our costs go up if we only did the one year? I have not heard back from them yet. So depending on what they, their answer is on that, if they say that we are held to a certain contract price if we do two years, I would recommend doing two years. We've had good luck with North Metro.
Okay.
Hello?
Were there any other questions?
Yeah, there is another question. If the city would like to contract with North Metro Animal Care for private or commercial kennel inspections, we could pay a $15 hourly rate. That sounds like it would be fine, but we do have, we require IUPs for commercial kennels, anything over four dogs. So I think that we would want to keep that with our code enforcement officer to be doing the annual inspections and making sure they're abiding to their IUPs.
Okay.
So it would be, if we had North Metro doing it as well, we're paying them $15 an hour and then having our code enforcement doing their annual inspections at that rate, so.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
So, Miss, Miss Price, then would, can we, would we just do it for the private and let this continue with the commercial because of the IUP? And it, and just advise North Metro that if somebody contacts them with a commercial, he needs to refer them to the city?
I can certainly ask North Metro if they could do that. I don't see why they wouldn't be able to do that for us.
Okay.
So, North Metro for the private only at $15 an hour.
Yeah.
So if, if code enforcement's doing this, is this the $60 an hour, $100 an hour, or $120 an hour?
I would have to ask that question.
We, we should know that too, because $15 an hour is better than $120.
And, Mayor and Council, I do agree with that, but North Metro wouldn't be checking to see if they're abiding by the IUP. That's where our code enforcement officer would be checking that.
We haven't checked on an IUP once that I know of, unless there's been-
Correct, and I think that's what we're trying to change, is to start doing those inspections.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying that, that in this case, it might be worthwhile to say there's a commercial kennel, that at least somebody's looking at that part of it, because I don't think we're going to get, we haven't got a list of IUPs yet, let alone starting inspections. So I, I think it'd be a while before we start doing inspections and maybe for this first year at $15 an hour, we at least know the commercial, because we do know we've had problems with some of those-
Correct.
-commercial entities in the past that needed to be addressed. And, and when, when the planner, when the code enforcement gets involved, it gets expensive because we've had some ugly situations. So maybe it makes sense, at least this first year. I, again, I don't have any idea how many commercial kennels we have in town here either, so how big a deal is this?
There's only a, a couple that I'm, I'm aware of, so.
But are we, are we going to send them out to inspect them?
Well, in, in the case of North Metro, I think they would get a list of them and they would go out and inspect them. I don't know that we sent them out. In the case of the IUPs, we'll be developing a schedule of, of when we go out and look at the IUPs. So the question is, and again, it's, it's one of these, we don't quite have enough information to decide, how many kennels are we talking, what's a typical inspection? And if Liz were to go out there or somebody from our staff were to go out there, what's a comparable cost? And so we have three kennels and we want to make sure that they're abiding by the legal requirements. Maybe this year it makes sense to do North Metro, but we should at least know what the, how many and what's potential cost. Because I do think, while we're making progress on IUPs and IUPs, it's been a while before we actually fit that in. We didn't budget for it this year.
Okay, the next question is, if the city would like to contract with North Metro Animal Care and Control for dangerous dog registration, you'll need to request a dangerous dog registration contract addendum. These services are made available at no charge to the city. However, North Metro Animal Care and Control would collect the registration as compensation for the service. So we-
The registration?
Yes, so this is confusing and this is another call I have into them, because we currently receive a report from the sheriff's office if we have a dog bite or a dog attacks somebody, a resident. So we receive those reports, but we would report that to North Metro. So the confusing part for me is, are they going to be just reporting it to themselves? They're just going to keep the documentation or how are they-
So that's a question you'll ask North Metro.
Correct, yep. And then the last question is, the, the citation will include the owner's information and the name and description of the animal. A copy of the citation will be sent to the city via US mail. This is from North Metro. The owner will have 14 days to show proof of current rabies license. If the owner does not follow up with this within 14 days, we'll follow up with the city regarding any additional action that the city desires to take. The goal is to provide the city with timely information and to encourage voluntary compliance with your city ordinance. Mary's question is, what are your thoughts regarding North Metro's question about further action the city would take? It is stated that their goal is voluntary compliance, so does this mean there isn't a citation fee? And if there is a fee, who receives it? And this is another question for North Metro.
All right, so you've got some additional questions and, and-
Are those from Mary?
Yes.
Those questions?
Correct.
Okay, and, and, and I'll, I'll defend her in this, because I think they're good questions. And she put them in email for Lori to address as she can. And, and because of that, I think it's worth tabling this until Lori can get those questions answered. And you might have had those questions already, I don't know. But we have a resolution here, so I'm assuming that some of these still need to be answered, so.
So in the past, we didn't have these addendums, these additional questions attached to the renewal of the contract. We just sent the contract through every year and we renewed it because we've had no issues with North Metro. So these are all new for all of us.
Yeah. And so because of that, it was important to at least ask the question. So we'll, I, I would move we table it until Lori can get the questions answered from North Metro and, and come back with a new resolution based on the recommendations.
And we can go ahead and-
Agree.
-approve the contract, once we know if it's a one year or two year. The addendums are a separate thing from the contract.
But we still need to know one year, two years.
Mm-hmm.
So I would say table it and let's deal with it in March. Jason, are you, was that a second I heard?
I did, I seconded it, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mayor Pelon motioned, Councilmember Alders second. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? I'll oppose.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And one last thing, item E, RCA for new city website and city Facebook page. Councilmember Rainville, you pulled that?
I did, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Alders is going to be happy with me, but I have, I have questions on that policy and have not had an opportunity to submit those questions to Lori. And so I would like to table it so that I can submit my questions to Lori.
I'll second it for discussion. So what, what's the, what type of questions are we looking at here?
I, I have questions within the social media policy. It's far, yeah, this is a blanket, a blanket policy from the LEAK, so I just, I want to make sure I have an opportunity to look at. I don't know if our attorney has looked at it, Lori can answer that. I've got some things in there that I, I'm not comfortable with, and if I'm going to have to vote on it, I want to be comfortable with it.
So has the LEAK?
Part of it is the website, and I, I've been going back to the website, the new website, and I got some questions or comments on, on that, so.
Has the, the LEAK training covered social media yet?
Mm-hmm, this, this week.
This week?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mayor and Council, the policy that's in there is the one that was approved by council last year.
Mm-hmm.
Did you catch that, Mary?
I'm sorry, can I hear that voice?
Lori said that that's the, the policy that is the, the policy that the, was approved by council last year. The social media policy.
Well, then, then based on LEAK training and other things I've been reading, I, I have some questions.
And so, your motion is to-
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders.
Can we, can Mary work with Lori on the question that she has and then we, next month, when we bring this and have Lori drive the website and show us what this thing is going to look like? And have us talk about it as a team?
Yes.
That's, that did already happen.
Oh, you guys already did that?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, sorry.
And we approved-
Natalie ran us-
We approved it, didn't we?
Yes, it was approved, but it's not live right now.
So, Mary, I don't, I don't understand, we already approved this once, didn't we? Or didn't we?
Approved with-
We approved the, we, remember, we had the Facebook website presented to us by Natalie and we approved it.
Well, the website, not the Facebook.
Yeah, the website.
If it's a website, it's a Facebook page too, right?
Council, Councilmember Rainville.
Okay, keep our tone a bit, here. I don't believe we've actually approved your website. Natalie sent it, Natalie presented it to us, Lori then subsequently sent us the link and asked us for our input. I have continued to go back and look at it, and I have some things, again, there are some layout questions that I have, I'll submit those to Lori and, and she may be able to just tell me that, yay or nay, maybe. Because I do have a question about things were coming up, because it was on the phone and then it wasn't live. So maybe my, my concerns will be moved over by, by sending it to Lori and she can tell me yay or nay.
Okay.
And then, but on that policy, again, based on LEAK training and some things that I've been looking at, I've got some questions, policy questions. And if, I guess if the council wants to move forward with it, my motion doesn't have to pass, but I will not vote for it then.
Well, I, I think that, you know, because the RCA that came in also says the, began a city Facebook page. We talked in general about what a Facebook page would be.
Yeah.
But we didn't talk specifically who, what, when and how. We talked about things like if something happens on a weekend, who's responsible? At one point, Lori, you said verbally that you would be the one doing Facebook, not other people. But I think we do need to actually capture what, because have you seen the-
Facebook?
The social media session? Have you had your session this week already?
Yes.
You understand that there are challenges with that. And, and one of our challenges that I've seen from other cities is with the staff we have, the expectations people have of the currentness of anything on Facebook, many cities have somebody who, that's their job, is to manage social media. And, and so I do think we need to have the Facebook policy, who, what, when, where, in place before we, we proceed with that. So we, I think we've all agreed that a city Facebook page would be good, we just need to know what the details are.
I feel like, Mr. Mayor-
Councilmember Blake?
I feel like there was, the, the gist of what it was, was all the pitfalls that a council can make in a, a Facebook page or, they didn't say what showed the website necessarily, but, but I don't think they said anything, I didn't remember anything being said about how you manage it or who manages it and stuff like that.
No, 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 that was what we talked about here as a council.
Oh, oh, I thought you were saying they brought that up.
Yeah, because when we first talked about it, Lori said she was going to be handling the entire thing. So the question was, when she's not available, you know, is she on vacation, she's at weekends? What, what, because you guys know, Facebook, if something happens, they want to know now. Fire truck just went out. Facebook wants to know where it went. We have to agree as a council, we're not going to do every fire call or every fire that goes through town. What type of information are we going to do if it happens on a Friday or Saturday or Sunday? Are we going to update it or not? And those are the types of things we need to, we need to come to agreement on. Because if Lori's going to do it all, you know, she works long hours as it is, I don't think she wants to be managing that on weekends.
No.
So what, what do we agree so that when the residents ask, the council's all in agreement? So I, I do think that needs to be fleshed out, so.
Uh, Mayor and Council, I'm- Uh, Mayor and council, I'm, I'm just trying to get this buttoned up. We've been talking about it. I think a Facebook page for the city would be great, because right now we have two Facebook pages and it, they're run by residents, which is wonderful. But a lot of people call the office and say, I saw on your Facebook page. And we say, no, we don't have a Facebook page, and the residents are looking for it. They don't want to type in the city website and look for information. They want instant
Yeah.
on their phone. They want it to come through on their feed. So, that's.
Oh, and I, we, we certainly had that discussion previously too. I think we just need to know, what are the, the criteria? What's the, what's the policy specifically to Facebook? Who, what, when? And what are we going to cover? What do we do if, if you're not available? And what are the expectations we would have, so residents say, I haven't seen anything since last week? Because there is that instantaneous, I need to update. And, and well, this is the type of information we said, well, agree to, and these are the days we publish.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg?
I liked, uh, setting a, a frequency, like she has her Friday updates that she does. I like that, being able to count on something weekly. And if we train the residents, that Facebook is, the city Facebook says something every week or whenever, then they get to know, that's when that information comes out. Secondly, that it, comments, I'm hoping that the comments can be turned off, because all that's going to do, I'm just saying this for Jason's benefit, if the comments are on, Lori will be on Facebook all day answering questions. We need to have comments off. And we need to just be posting
There'll be an information.
at a certain amount of time, because I've been baited in both Facebook pages. And as soon as you get in there and they, they post things in there to specifically bait you, and then they drag you into a long conversation, that's just going to get you in trouble. It's just going to get Lori in trouble, the city in trouble. I think we need to be, as the mayor was saying, very careful when we roll this thing out.
Yeah, I, I think Barry, Barry Olson, our old building official, had it, used to have a thing on his wall, I think is appropriate to that discussion. He said, arguing with, with a fool is like wrestling with a pig. You just get dirty and then you start to realize they're enjoying this. So, we don't want to get into that, but it's almost 10 o'clock. I think what this, this begs is the policy. So again, back to Lori, you know what you're looking for. Let's get a policy together that answers the questions you were hearing. And so we can, uh, look at how we can move forward, so.
So is the website going to move forward and Facebook isn't? The refresh on the website?
Well, the, the comments that were made on some of the background, some of the, uh, the, did we find out if it's because it's not live? Um, that's why it's not working on the phone? Did, did we get some of those things addressed?
Yep, all the questions have been answered.
Okay.
And I included Councilmember Rainville's comment in. She didn't have questions. She's not, I put.
Well, so if, if it goes live and we need to improve it, we can improve it.
Correct.
Because the whole point of this was, it's very easy to change.
It is, yes.
And, uh.
Much easier than what we currently have, because there's, we're having the code to put information out. And it should be so much easier.
So can we make a motion to let the, uh, the website go live? And then come back to Lori with a proposal on what Facebook should look like?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Uh, and then we have a motion on this floor.
We do.
And that was, sort of, my motion. So, uh, what I would do is, is resend my motion, which was supposed to, if, uh, table everything, so I would send that motion.
All right.
I second Jason's motion.
Lori, are you comfortable with the Facebook, or with the website going live as is right now?
I am comfortable with it. Um, I, that's why I want to make sure council's good with it. I think I've addressed everybody's comments or questions on it. But I'm comfortable with it, yes.
As far as you understand, all the links work?
Yes.
All the forms that you need to download work?
Mm-hmm, and we'll be testing that before we hit live too.
And if, if there's feedback going forward, then we bring it up and say, this is how the council would like to see a change.
Correct.
Lori, um, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake?
Are we, do we, are we paying to have this, uh, up, the, the website? Do we pay a monthly fee or anything for the website to be up?
The current website we're using is around $600 a, uh, year.
Okay.
And the one that we're switching to is half that price.
Okay.
And it's easier to use. Great.
All right, so we have a, uh, a motion, Councilmember Alders, to go live with the website and have Lori come back with a proposal on the Facebook. We have a second by Councilmember Blake to that effect. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I believe that's all the numbers we had on our list tonight. I apologize, we're an hour late. But I think it was a good meeting. Take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We are adjourned. So at this point, Lori, with these tables.